Okay, we've got a few speakers on non-agenda public comment. Gay Williams, Borden Hughes, Rod Worth, and Julia De La Paz. Any of those folks here? Gay Williams? Yep, please come on out. No, no, are you here to speak? Please, please come up to the podium. Yep, thank you.
My name is Borden Hughes. I stood before this board 7 September 2010 and asked two questions of its members, and still have not received any answers to my questions. I've been a school bus driver for San Diego Unified School District for 30 years. My last day of full-time monthly benefited employment as an extra-board school bus driver was 31 July 2008. My first day of retirement was August 1st, 2008. I did not take the golden handshake. I worked the 2008, 2009, and 2009, 2010 school years as a part-time hourly substitute school bus driver. My questions to the board members then and still are: Why was I terminated? Why was I given no reason or cause? Secondly, why was I not informed in some official manner such as a letter stating that I had been terminated and the reasons for my termination, but instead had to learn of my termination through rumor? The last time I stood before this board, I was told someone would get back with me with answers to my questions. I have received no answers. However, a few other questions have come to my mind. These questions are: Has district policy changed such that classified retirees can no longer be hired as part-time hourly employees? If so, is this district-wide? If this policy is not district-wide, does it just apply to retirees from the Department of Transportation? If this policy does not apply to all classified retirees from the Department of Transportation, then does it just apply to school bus drivers? And I should add the two truck drivers who drove the luggage truck to camp. If this new policy just applies to school bus drivers, then what is the reason for this new policy applying only to school bus drivers? I would appreciate if some of the board members could give me answers.
Yeah, I thank you, Mr. Hughes. And Superintendent, can we make sure? I apologize, we should have gotten you an answer before this meeting, but if we can follow up. Okay. Well, we'll get the answer too. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Absolutely. And Rod Worth? Similar issue?
Hello. I'm not going to reiterate everything that Borden just said because my situation is similar. I worked for the district for 26 years and I retired in June of '09. And at the time, it was the district's policy to rehire, or not rehire, but to continue using, you know, retired hourlies as part-time substitutes as needed. In fact, they incentivized the drivers to come back by offering to pay them a higher wage than a beginning wage. So it was like, you know, please, you know, come back because traditionally, there's a shortage of drivers. You know, right now, there's a surplus of drivers, but that's not the norm. So they would ask the drivers to come back and we'll pay you, you know, the same wage that you were getting when you retired. Well, you know, so I worked the '09-'10 school year and everything was fine. And I came back to work the '10-'11 school year, and I got a call the night before I was supposed to report back and say, you know, that I was told that, well, we don't need your services right now, which is understandable because I'm an hourly, but I was not told I was terminated. You know, I was just told, we don't need you right now, but we'll get, you know, we might not need you for a while, we have a surplus of drivers. And I was never given any explanation. I found out through rumor and word of mouth that I had been terminated. You know, and so I just wonder why? Because I'm really good. I've been doing this 26 years and I really know what I'm doing. And I have a, you know, pretty stellar work record and a driving record. And why would you not want me driving a bus for you? And if it's an issue of wages, I mean, is it, you know, the, you know, the $5-an-hour difference, I think, beginning wages in the mid-16s? And they were paying us like the twin of the mid-21s, which is the highest wage. Is that, is that an issue? You know, I don't know. But I was just pretty much terminated without any notification at all, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
That's my situation.
Understood, and same situation. We'll get back to you guys with an answer and make sure it's a public answer as well.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, Julia De La Paz?
Can I actually speak on the floor?
Oh, yeah, you want to speak on a later issue?
Yes, thank you.
Sure, okay, no problem. And, and what's more, Gay Williams? Nope? Okay, good, we will call our meeting to order. I'd like to now ask the Army JRO T.C. Color Guard from Morris High School to present the colors. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the October 12, 2010 regular meeting to order with all board members present. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium, and if you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Hudson. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 p.m. and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the ASP student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself, what's going on at your school, both academically and socially. And we'll start with Nancy Sokis, the ASP Council President from Patrick Henry High School.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Sokis. I'm the ASP President at Patrick Henry, and I am the President of the District Council of Presidents. At Patrick Henry, we just had our first successful blood drive. We raised over 50 pints of blood last week. We also have a free electronic waste recycling event this weekend, which is held at the school. Our ASP is currently in the process of planning our homecoming, which will be on October 29. And I invite you all to come to our game, which will be at 6:30 p.m. that night. We are also working alongside our administration to create a possible extended lunch schedule for next year. And the seniors have been receiving tutorials from and have been working closely with the counselors to start filling out our college applications. Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you, Nancy. Now Carla Cruz, the ASP President from a pretty decent school, the San Diego Met High School.
All right. Hello. My name is Carla Cruz. I am the President at the San Diego Met High School. And our school, because it does have about 200 students, we are focusing on improving our CST scores by working together with our advisors. And socially, we're still welcoming our freshmen by our little mentor-mentee program. And also, our seniors are ensuring and working together to make sure that 100 percent of them are accepted into college.
Great, thank you, Carla. Great.
I think in the interest of full disclosure, we should say President Barrera has a child at the Met.
That's right, that's right. And, and I'll just point out that Carla's a junior and beat out the seniors running for ASP Presidents. Just to give a little jab to my son. We'll now have our student presentation, our first one of the year. And Ms. Jackson, would you like to introduce the San Diego School of Creative and Performing Arts?
I think I hear them. I think they're ready to come in.
They're tuning up.
They're tuning up. But I will ask the Area Superintendent, Dr. Campbell, to come forth and introduce the principal of Met School. While they're coming in, I'd like to say, I want to acknowledge as the Area One Superintendent that Area One is in the house. Area One is being represented by Morris that did the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have SCPA who's going to give a performance, student performance. And we have one of the teachers here today. I don't know if Mitzi is, is here today.
I think she's caught in traffic.
Okay, Mitzi's caught in traffic, but we do have Mrs. Payne, is that correct? Mrs. Payne here is one of the teachers, and she's going to introduce her group that's going to do a performance, perform a song for us. And then I also want to introduce some of the principals in the house, Area One principals. Will you stand, please? I am so proud of Area One tonight.
Hi, my name's Cameron Page. I'm the Director at SCPA, where I've had the pleasure of working with some of these students now for over four years. Speak into here, okay. Had the pleasure of working with some of these students for over four years. They've come to us from several different schools, because we are a magnet school, starting in our program at the sixth grade and then auditioning to come back as high schoolers. So the people behind me are all music majors, grades nine through 11. Twelve, we have one senior, one senior. And they wish to pursue music beyond high school, so I'm really pleased to announce, or you're going to play, and they play more than one instrument, they want to tell you that too. But I'm pleased to announce the SCPA's string ensemble.
I'm Mitzi Luisadiga, and I have the privilege of being the principal of this great school, the San Diego School of Creative and Performing Arts. What you heard was a piece written in 1738 by Mozart, Divertimento. What I also want to share with you is that we do great things. All of you are invited to come to our school and see what we do. It's a place where the arts and the academics share center stage. We have 1,419 students, grades six through 12th grade, and I can tell you, they have long days from 7:00 o'clock in the morning until, what time do you normally leave? About 4:00, okay, 4:00, and sometimes they're in rehearsals until much longer. Speaking of rehearsals, I have many brochures designed by our students. It's our season brochure. There's so many performances. If you like dance, there's dance. If you love theater, and if you want to hear them, you must come back again. And I would like to thank the Board of Education members and the Superintendent for extending the invitation for our students to perform this, this afternoon. Thank you. Well, our first violinists is getting their music. I'd like to talk about Macbeth, which we are doing at our school, and it's going to be opening up in about two weeks. And a lot of the musicians in there are going to be improvising because Macbeth will be set in corporate America instead of back in like Shakespearean times. And so we're just like, we're going to be like improvising music today, and it's going to be really cool. And afterwards, we're also doing Scrooge or A Christmas Carol, and that's going to be really good, too. So come see that. That will be in December, I think. Yeah. Well, our first violinists is getting their music. I'd like to talk about Macbeth, which we are doing at our school, and it's going to be opening up in about two weeks. And a lot of the musicians in there are going to be improvising because Macbeth will be set in corporate America instead of back in like Shakespearean times. And so we're just like, we're going to be like improvising music today, and it's going to be really cool. And afterwards, we're also doing Scrooge or A Christmas Carol, and that's going to be really good, too. So come see that. That will be in December, I think. I have to tell you a few more things about our school, and that is, this is much better, I mentioned that the arts and academics take center stage, and we work hard at that. Our API scores increased from 760 to 786 this past year, and that, that was a big jump. And our goal now is to go beyond 800 for next year. And when the students are not involved in their academic requirements, I have to tell you that they're performing all over California and beyond. Our students have performed in major festivals, and they've also have, about 51 students were part of the San Diego Repertory's production in partnership with SCPA this summer of Hairspray. We have about 17 partners in our community at our school, and one is the San Diego Opera. And I have to tell you that every year, the opera works with our 10th grade English class. And together, the 10th grade class with Mr. Farson, who's in our audience, they create a libretto, which is performed by the opera singers. And so you have to come and see us. Check out our website, www.scpa.sandy.net. I know our students will, are planning a trip to Chicago, and that's sometime in spring to be a part of a festival that's there. And I also like to say that we can't do this without the support of the parents. We have lots of parents who are involved, and we have a great admin team. I see Mr. Jacoby here in the audience, Mr. Trujillo, the artistic director, and our other VP, Ms. Jennifer Robinson. And again, thank you for this opportunity.
All right, well, that was, thank you, Mitzi. And thank you, thank you to the students at SCPA. That was a great way to kick off our first student performance of the year. Okay, we will now move on to the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Koba.
Thank you, President Barrera. I just want to add my own, what a way to start out the, the year with that cluster performance. Going to the administrative assignments today, the following appointments were made. Elizabeth Castillo Duval to Vice Principal Troya Smeed Elementary in Area One, Superintendency. Armando Farias to Vice Principal Knox Preparatory K8, Area One, Superintendency. Kevin Martin to Vice Principal Zamarano Fine Arts Academy, also Area One, Superintendency. Brandon Lemon to Vice Principal Creative Performing and Media Arts Middle School, Office of Area Four, Superintendency.
And I just want to say that CPNA better take good care of Mr. Lemon.
Okay, and moving on to the Superintendent's Information Report. I want to begin with a very positive note. We have some very significant milestones in terms of academic improvement this year, and I want to recognize principals for that. Later on in the board agenda, there will be a presentation by the Accountability Office on academic performance, but I think it's important that we take a moment to single our, single out the principals, who I know represent a complete campus team that included all of the classified and certified personnel, teachers, counselors, front office personnel, custodians, and the like. All were part of the team that helped to create this improvement. And the first of the list is the following principals come from program improvement schools that made annual yearly progress, which is a critical step on the way out of program improvement. So if you would, please stand when I call your name. Nestor Suarez from Cabrillo Elementary. Cindy Martin from Central Elementary. Valerie Voss from Clay Elementary. Robin McKelick from Horton Elementary. Jerly Fisher Garza from Lafayette Elementary. James Menez from Lee Elementary. Cynthia Garrison Arkey from Longfellow. Carol Ann Bouguet from Rosa Parks. And Mike George from Taft Middle School. Can we please give him a round of applause? Thank you, folks. And what I'd like to do now is recognize the four principals who not only made it with annual yearly progress, but made it totally out of program improvement. I think that's a remarkable milestone that we're all proud of. So if I could, Tabka Bustani from Edison Elementary. Deborah Baker from Encanto Elementary. Chip Dale from Garfield Elementary. And Brad Callahan from Lewis Middle School. A job well done, and I can only put about five or six exclamation marks behind it. In some other, I think, very good news and a, I think, a nice snapshot of the district over the last couple of weeks, we had the honor at Kearney High School Campus at the complex back on the 30th of September to have the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Jack O'Connell, here, as well as Assembly Member Marty Block, and some of our own board members and other VIPs, entire school staff. And that was to witness the first-ever certification for Link Learning. And that was awarded to the Kearney Digital Media and Design School, and it's the first of a kind in the state of California, which recognizes a critical number of milestones that balance both a career and a college curriculum in order to meet a high standard of quality education for the kids. And this is a first in the state and a first for San Diego Unified, and we just want to take a moment to recognize what Cheryl Hiblin and her staff did to make that happen. So that was a week ago, over 10 days ago, I should say. And then very quickly, a couple of days later, I had the opportunity with Mrs. Nakamura to go out to Miller Elementary School. And we were the great beneficiaries of the generosity of two organizations. There's something called the Heart of America Foundation in cooperation, collaboration with Target, the retail store giant, that have come together, and they provide a funding and technical assist for making over school libraries across the country. And there were 32 schools across the United States that were the awardees this year. And for Miller Elementary, they took a 1970s vintage, tired, old, outdated library and made it into a real beacon of learning for our kids, and celebrated that on the 1st of October. And it was even more special than that, and that's because afterwards, there was a large assembly on the blacktop in the main center of the campus. As part of that, not only were there speakers in recognition of the kids and of the milestone event with the library, but they had a Skype connection, a big screen behind the stage. And they actually had a long-distance interview with a, a well-known children's author, a fellow named Jeff Kinney, who's written something called the Wimpy Kids Series. I have to plead ignorance, I didn't know what it was till after the event. But he's talking to kids, being questioned, they're asking him about various considerations with writing his stories long distance. He was in Vancouver. But that was topped off by something even more impressive than that. Many of you may or may not be aware that well over 80 percent of Miller Elementary has children of military dependence. That's because it sits just outside Navy-Marine Corps housing, the Murphy Canyon area. And the next Skype event was they connected to the USS Pellul deployed in the Pacific, and they actually had a half a dozen parents on the screen. You should have seen the sight, the sounds of the kids. It was quite remarkable to, that was a total surprise to all of them. Followed by that, I had the opportunity to get out to a couple of our other schools this past week, and I've actually joined the Claremont Academy of Business and Technology and mentoring a student out there. So I had my first homework assignment with one of our 11th graders. It was a tough interview, I have to tell you that. And then the last thing I'd like to do, or two more things, I'm sorry. We're in the midst of our town hall meetings. We now, I think, are up to six. And over the last eight or nine days, we've been to Point Loma High School, University City, and then last night at Cherokee Point Elementary. All, I think, very energetic discussions with the community, talking about academic and budget issues, and having some small group sessions where we're getting some good feedback from, from the community on the issues. And I promised my last line, and that's to congratulate Lieutenant Ruben Littlejohn of our San Diego District Police Department. Remarkable milestone for a law enforcement officer. He's a graduate today of the FBI's National Academy at Quantico. Only a handful of people go there. And that's, that's it for this time.
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Jackson just said that she saw Mr. Littlejohn earlier today. I just hope she wasn't getting in trouble. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So, so.
Please vote. John, can you vote?
Just do it.
Try that one more time. Please vote. Okay, great. Okay, I'm on to Item E1, our arrangement with Panasonic Foundation and Perrion Associates. Superintendent Koba?
Okay, I think Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Meyer and Area Superintendent Brenda Campbell will have this teed up.
Yes, the Panasonic Foundation and San Diego Unified have been in ongoing discussions this year on how to better jointly support our students towards student achievement. And as a result of some of those discussions, the Sidney E. Frank Foundation has agreed to work with the Lincoln and Morris Cluster, and they plan to work on
Please vote.
John, can you vote? Try that one more time. Please vote. Okay, great. Okay, I'm onto item E1, our arrangement with Panasonic Foundation and Perrin Associates. Superintendent Koba.
Okay, I think Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Meyer and Area Superintendent Brenda Campbell will have this teed up.
Yes, the Panasonic Foundation and San Diego Unified have been in ongoing discussions this year on how to better jointly support our students towards student achievement. And as a result of some of those discussions, the Sidney E. Frank Foundation has agreed to work with the Lincoln and Morris Cluster and they plan to work on instituting the goals for student achievement within that particular cluster. As part of some of the things that they will do, they plan to support principals in strengthening the instruction within the cluster. They also plan to coach and direct instructional support and work with teacher leaders on developing professional learning communities. They also are going to facilitate cross-learning groups where principals will go to other schools to see what they're doing. And also work with all of us to identify key indicators at each grade level, to see what students need at each grade level to move forward. As a result, as we've discussed together as a group, we plan a rigorous evaluation of this program and we will measure the annual achievable results and look at this with a joint task force that will see whether we have made significant progress in this partnership and what those results are so they can be shared across the district. At this point, I would like to invite Dr. Brenda Campbell to come up and please discuss how this will be something she will benefit from in her Area One cluster.
Good evening, Board President Richard Barrera, Superintendent Koba, and Board Trustees. It is a great honor for me to be able to work with the Panasonic Foundation. Larry Leverett and George Perry are here tonight. Would you please stand? As Dr. Myers already indicated, there are three areas in which the Panasonic Foundation would help in terms of the central office, looking at the district's mission statement, adopted, board adopted goals for student achievement in academics, and the district's academic initiatives, including the A through G. What I'm really excited about in working with the Panasonic Foundation is the partnership at the schools will focus on breaking the predictability of many of the educational outcomes for students that are from low socioeconomic situations. It is predicted that students in low socioeconomic areas will have low academic performance and achievement, low access and success of students participating in the A through G curriculum. It's predicted that students are taught by teachers that are ineffective, resulting in mediocracy. We are going to break those predictable barriers that cause this perception about students are living in conditions of the low socioeconomic situation. Although there are five schools that will be participating in this foundation and partnership, all Area One principals have committed to achieving double-digit numbers on their CST scores and also to improve their AYP scores over 800. We are up for the challenge, we are ready for the support, we are energized as a cluster, and we truly have the support of teachers and students to make a difference. I'd like to invite the principals of the schools that we have talked with about participating in this partnership. We have Morris High School, if you would come down front. We have Lincoln High School. We have Knox K8, Fullerton K8, Freeze, and Troyus Meade. And I don't know if they're all here, but those are the schools that we have talked with. There is a criteria that we use and there are eight items on this criteria. I will only mention three of them. All the principals have volunteered to participate in this partnership and this foundation. They were selected because of the principal leadership that's committed to advancing academics and social outcomes for all children and students. They were selected because adults with a shared commitment to sustain or build a culture of achievement based on high performance expectations for adults and students. They were selected because of the achievement growth that is stalled and a select of continuous performance in looking at high numbers of gains in their CST scores. However, they are on the move and they are ready to perform and they have the structures and systems in place so that with the extra additional support of the expertise of Panasonic Foundation, we certainly can accomplish this goal. Now we're open for questions, if you'd like to ask the principals or if you'd like them to speak about their school.
Board members, any questions or comments?
We've already talked to the Panasonic Foundation.
We have. So can we get a motion to approve this agreement?
Erica.
Okay, please vote, board members. Terrific. Thank you, Dr. Campbell, and thank you principals. We look forward to it. Thank you. Okay, let's go to our 2010 Accountability Progress Report. Superintendent Koba and Ron Rody.
President Barron, we have Ron Rody, our Accountability Officer, coming forward. I'd like to have Ron just kind of highlight quickly for you a number of the key outcomes. We already recognize schools that made annual yearly progress and exited program improvement, but there are a few more items that we want to cover very briefly with you.
Okay.
Ron?
Thank you Superintendent Koba. We were here a couple of weeks ago to look at the STAR and the CST data, but tonight we're looking at the accountability data. And I just wanted to emphasize that there are some differences in the data as we go forward and accountability data look at students that schools essentially have had continuously from the start of the school year as of the 4th Friday through the testing window. So it's those students who they've had essentially a full year to impact, at least as far as the testing calendar is considered, and so it's those students who are reflected in the reports that we're looking at tonight. And the reports include three components, the first of which is the AYP, the federal accountability, and then we have the state accountability, the academic performance index, and then related to the federal accountability is are the program improvement results. Just going to skip over the next slide, we'll catch up with the data there as we move forward. And here we're looking at the components that make up AYP or one component of that is the annual measurable objectives. And just to let everyone know what tests are included in there, we have our California Standards Test, grades 2 through 8, we have the California Alternate Performance or the Kappa, that assessment as well, and then we also have the California Modified Assessments. So those three tests make up the results for grades 2 through 8. Then in senior high, we always need to clarify, there's often some misunderstanding, but it's only the 10th grade Casey, what we call census results that are included for AYP. So every student in 10th grade must take the Casey test once that year and it's those students who we use for our AYP determination and supplemented by students, our special education students who do not take the Casey, but their Kappa results are also counted. And at the bottom of this, there is the note that about continuously enrolled students are those who are included in these data and also English learners who have not been in US schools for at least a year are also excluded. So what has been our performance as we move forward? I think I skipped one. Seems like slide, looks like my slide 5 is not there. Well, slide 5, I don't know if it's in your board member packets. For some reason it's missing from our display here, but it looks at the different student groups' performance on our AMOs or the annual measurable objectives. And we see a similar pattern of what we saw in the CSTs where we see some of our student groups starting to show more growth than the district overall and also with typical comparison groups. So just to identify that our Hispanic student group, economically disadvantaged, English learners, and students with disabilities are starting to show more improvement than we see with the district as a whole, or as I said, some comparison groups. And here we're looking then at the results. There are four indicators in AYP that we have to meet as a district. The first one is that we must test at least 95% of our students and we've met that objective. The second criteria are these AMOs and as you note there, the district was, the hard target was 56% proficient in English Language Arts and 56.4 proficient in mathematics. And at the bottom cell in that column rather, you can see that we missed 11 of the 24 targets. So some of our student groups are not demonstrating the proficiency that we're needing to show for AYP. The state accountability measure, the API, is also an indicator in AYP and as you can see, the district made the 680 score that it needed to make. And then the last column is looking at graduation rate and just want to emphasize here that we have a change from prior years. The State Board of Action took, or State Board of Education took action earlier this year and established a new statewide target for graduation rate, 90%, with a 10-year window to get there. So this is different than it used to be. There used to be one tenth of one point of growth that was required. Now districts need to make up, because there are 10 years left to get to our target, if they're not hitting 90%, one tenth of the difference between their current or their prior year score and 90%. Next year, because there's nine years left, you have to make up one ninth of the difference. The next year will be one eighth, et cetera. So it's going to, or districts are going to have to demonstrate much more growth in graduation rate than was formerly required.
Ron, where was our 2009?
We were at 84.3 is my recollection and so again, we would have to make up essentially about .6 points to make our growth target on graduation rate.
Have we made any progress regarding how we define graduation rate?
We are still using the NCES graduation rate as defined by the state. For the class of 2012, we will be switching over to the new cohort rate, often called the National Governors Association Cohort Rate.
Can you describe that for us? Is it more stringent or is it more lax?
It is more stringent. We will see likely a decline in the graduation rate when we move to that. There are some students who we can now count as graduates, for example, students who get GEDs who are no longer counted as graduates under the new rules. And also it is a strict cohort where you start with a particular group of students and you monitor them for four years and students who move in, you add to the group, but it is definitely more stringent.
So we're going to have a much higher, should say higher bar to meet then, right? They moved the bar for us then?
Right, they moved the bar plus it's going, the measurement becomes more strict as well.
Yeah, okay. Brace yourself.
I know what the stakes are, I know what the stakes are for us because we've got to look at improvement each year and I'm not against that. But until we figure out a way to tie this to students, we're missing something. You know, there's no stake at all for a student here. If they do poorly on these tests, there's no consequence at all. And I think that one of the things that we should do, and it would probably show very quick results, would be for us to work hard on the concept of how to tie this with student promotion and retention. You know, it seems to me that this data, every year we have something that we have all the control over for ourselves, but we have no way to motivate the kids to do achievement. I predict that if we did anything about tying student performance to their success rate for whatever they do, that we'd see huge jumps in these performances. It's, you know, if you have no stake in the results, what you do is sit down, mark a few marks, and that's that. I'd better try it harder for the tests, the unit tests the teachers give than for the tests that depends on how we look as a school district. I find that ridiculous and we could keep doing this for year after year after year and until we figure it out, and we, sure, we have to talk to our teachers, we have to talk to the people that are part of this, but to continually take data from kids who don't care about their stake in this is ridiculous. There's no incentive for a kid to do better, none. What kind of business would you be in where you'd say, you know, your customers don't have any responsibility? You know, and their prices won't go up or something won't happen to them as a consequence of paying no attention. You go to a doctor and if you ignore him, what happens? Will he die? Okay.
That's pretty drastic, Mr. Deputy.
Well, but I mean, but the point of it is that here we are, reporting data every year. I've seen these reports so many times, I can't, well, 20 years at least, and they're always got some little hope, future hope, that the kids will all of a sudden do better because we said attaboy and then somebody condemns somebody for giving them a candy bar because they do good? You know, because at least somebody figured out there should be some incentives, but I think the district ought to get into the incentive business. I think we ought to understand that it's our future as a district and the people that are evaluating us out there in the public and saying public schools aren't doing well are wrong, but we're not actually doing much for ourselves either. And this is a perfect example of it. You know, a little miniscule change each year, you know, we say attaboy, attaboy and we're proud of ourselves and at least the trends are in the right direction, but if it made a big jump like, you know, 10 points because all of a sudden we held kids accountable for how they did on it, I think we'd be making some sense.
We are constrained, of course, by the logistics of the testing and that we don't get the results until the students are gone for the summer and so it's hard to have that immediacy of results.
We certainly should figure that out.
As a state we should.
I mean, there are people that are talking about evaluating teachers on a test that was taken the previous year, you know, and they're talking about that, well, okay, then if we have a test in our hands, maybe we ought to figure out a deal with somebody that we can score it ourselves. We could, you know, we may have to give the test, but we may want to take the responsibility for using the test for some other reason. I don't want to blank out our imagination on how to use it. What I'm saying is we ought to start thinking about how to incent the kids to do better.
And also with graduation, we are still have a pending status, as do all districts in the state, given some delays in the implementation of the CalPads data system across the state. Those results will be newly published in November when updates are available. As I mentioned earlier, we did meet our API growth measure and we grew by 19 points, got to 785 and as shown here, the minimum level was 680. So we met that criterion and we just talked about graduation rates being delayed. And so the overall picture on AYP is that as a district, we did not meet all of our targets, so we have moved into year two of program improvement as a district. And looking at our chart of urban districts that we typically use for comparison, you will note that the pattern is very similar among these districts. All have met participation rates, all have met their API indicator, but it's the annual measurable objectives or percent proficient where districts are not making it. And we have a few more targets, four more targets this year than we had last year. We used to have 46, now we have 50, given the new student group for two or more races the way we now need to classify students in that area. Also in the far right-hand column, note that of all the years of PI for these districts, we are the only districts at year two, as you remember, last year we were the last urban district to enter program improvement of these groups. These are some results for schools by level on their performance on the AYP targets. And you will note that elementary schools generally, the performance in English Language Arts and Mathematics were roughly the same in that 72% of sites made it for both ELA and then 78% in Mathematics. But if we look at the middle level schools in the second row, note that English Language Arts was at 78% and Mathematics drops down to 52%. So I think we can see there the impact of algebra at middle grades and also this ties in very nicely with the superintendent's focus this year on Mathematics. We know that's an area where we need to do. We know that's an area where we need to do better. So now I'm gonna turn to the Academic Performance Index, the state accountability measure. Just want to emphasize that we switch here from looking only at English Language Arts and Mathematics. We now bring in History, Social Science, and Mat, Science, rather. So this is a more comprehensive look at achievement across all subject areas. And we've already looked at the overall district result. And then here, looking at the different student groups. And again, I wanna draw your attention to the right-hand column, and we note, again, for those same student groups where we saw improvement on the AMOs for AYP, we see that same improvement here. If we look at the results for Hispanic students, went up by 26 points. Socioeconomically disadvantaged by 25, English learners by 27, and students with disabilities by 31. Those are really strong growth measures, whereas we see that the district overall went up by 19, if you recall, and other groups did not go up as much. So again, this is consistent, so it's enough to tell us that we need to look at what's happening with those particular students, and what we're doing apparently is starting to work. Here, we're looking at the schools that were meeting all of their targets. And as we go across the five years here, we notice we're up to 65 percent of the schools, again, looking at their school-wide target, plus all their student groups. So again, better performance than in prior years. And if we look at making their school-wide targets only, not the student groups, we have 82 percent that did that. So again, it's often maybe just one student group where a school is not making its API, but it is making it overall. And then the last row there is the schools that are over the state's target of 800. And notice that we had a huge jump this year, from 76 schools up to 101 schools. So again, I think this is reflective of the results we've seen across the district. The comparison to urban districts, note that there are only two districts who grew by more points than did San Diego. We see Oakland and San Bernardino. But as you may know, the API is designed such that the lower you start, the easier it is to get more growth points, because there's differential weighting factors given to students who are performing at far below basic versus those that perform at higher levels. You get more points difference if you improve students at the lower ends of the scale. So I think this is a good result for San Diego, as again, a relatively high-performing district among these, but still among the highest growth districts. And the last section I'm gonna turn to is the program improvement, and I think Superintendent Koba has really already highlighted a lot of the real positive results here. We do have more schools in program improvement than we had last year. We know that those targets continue to go up for AYP by 10 or 11 percentage points each year. So this year, we have 95 schools in program improvement. 82 of those are district-managed schools. 20 schools that were on the watch list last year have moved into year one of program improvement. And we had 13 schools that were already in program improvement that made their AYP targets, and four of those exited. And so again, as Superintendent Koba's already recognized these schools, we have the names here as well. And also, we have seven charter schools that also made their AYP targets, in addition to the district-managed schools. So I think that is a summary of our accountability progress report, and I will have to answer any questions. Dr. Rode?
Thank you, Mr. Rode, for the presentation. I know we want to really focus on data and continue improving. I would just like to ask you, for the benefit of the people in the audience, people watching on TV, and myself also, when people are listening to AYP, API, AMO, et cetera, et cetera. And then one of the questions that Mr. DeBecque often asks when we hear a report is, so what? In simple terms. And that's why, if you could just summarize in one or two minutes what this report means in terms of what's happening with academic achievement in San Diego. And I'm not trying to take away from the importance of all the details, but just for a layperson to understand, what does this mean about how we're doing in San Diego?
I think one thing this tells us is that schools that we typically perhaps would not expect to have the high-level achievement they might have, they've been able to demonstrate by adopting certain strategies, and really focusing on using data at their sites, focusing on essential standards, bringing teachers together in professional learning communities. Those sorts of strategies have been, allowed them to make tremendous growth. So it's, we can't look at schools and say, no, you're low performing. We can't set the bar too high. I think this demonstrates that there are places where it's working, and so we need to learn from those schools. And so that's kind of at a school-wide level. We can also look at schools that are having particular success with student groups. So maybe certain schools have adopted some strategies for English learners, and they might be having, you know, maybe not overall school growth, because they haven't adopted that across their campus, but they may be having some specific success with a particular group in that way. So we're studying these schools, and our area superintendents are working with their principals as they meet in their meetings to identify which schools are having success, and which schools are struggling, and building that community where they can share results, and again, take that across their different schools.
And just in summary, as far as the, how we compare to other districts in the state, what would, how would you describe how San Diego's doing compared to the rest of California?
We, again, looking at those urban comparisons, I think we demonstrate better than average growth, if you will, for most of those districts. As I said, if you're looking at API, if you start lower, it's more difficult to get more points of growth. So I think because we, again, had the third greatest number of points, it demonstrates that even though we come in as a higher-performing district, we're still moving students from the far below, the below basic, up to the basic and perhaps proficient levels. So I think it demonstrates that we're doing a good job for the students across the spectrum.
All right, and then just one more question, in terms of individual students. We're looking a lot at the school averages, the group averages, the district averages, and so forth. What do we know from this about how individual students are progressing or growing, or what can be done with this data to really tease it out for specific students? Because we're concerned about each child learning, rather than just having a higher average.
Sites have the ability with our data management tool to look at students from year to year. They can run what's called a pivot table report, for example, and they can see which students were at a particular level one year, and which students may have increased or declined a performance level subsequent year. And we always have to remember, this is a single data point, one day testing essentially, and so they use that in addition to other evidence that they have about student achievement, but it can be an indicator of where students may be starting to struggle. They also have the ability to look at individual strands or clusters within each of the subjects. So they can start looking at English Language Arts, for example, at word study, is it comprehension? So they can start zeroing in a bit better on specific strategies or challenges individual students are having, and then building support, supports or interventions to address the needs of those individual students.
So while the federal and the state government are looking at averages, the teachers can actually use it to look at specific individual students from year to year?
Yes. Any other comments, Mrs. Nakamura?
Yes, Mrs. Nakamura has to leave, because Mrs. Nakamura has to go to eventually Weinberger Elementary School and talk about Proposition J, which I hope all of you are following closely, so.
Right, thank you, Mrs. Nakamura.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from Mr. Rode?
Thank you, Mr. Rode. Great job. Okay, now let's move on to item E4. This is the budget impact on academic programs, so we've just had a little bit of a snapshot of, oh, did I, where did I skip?
E3.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, update on goals for student achievement, E3, yeah. Dr. Meyer, yeah.
Thank you. You just heard the standardized tests and how they impact and measure student achievement. And the Goals for Student Achievement group that we have formed and that we're working with, look at other factors as well. And as part of the district's vision of what we need to measure and what students need to do, we have decided on three things: emphasizing critical thinking, encouraging full academic potential for all students, and then finally, what you mentioned earlier, measuring one year's academic growth. And this is a brief check-in tonight to share with you where we are with those academic indicators. And we have had a team that has been meeting since August, and they've been going through and creating ways to address these three central issues. And what we've been asked to do last, we've been asked to create indicators that give us examples of what literacy objectives would be that would meet these three things. This was an update, a verbal update, but I can certainly give you copies of the update. And we're getting prepared, and this is a check-in, to present on October 26th exactly what we've created, which will have the rubric and which will have indicators that you can review. And tonight, I wanted to share that this particular group, they met and they went over the core common standards that are national, and they're working with the reading and writing standards, and they're trying to see how they can integrate these literacy standards into the other content areas. And I wanted to share that the, they're really looking for broader goals and having a rigorous, strong curriculum. When I saw the students over here nodding that the CSTs don't make a big difference to them, we're looking for things that do make a big difference to them. And so this particular working team have got together, and they're now bringing it back to the larger group. And that larger group then will come here and report out on the October 26th. Who's on the team? Okay, we'll tell you on the 26th, but I did wanna especially thank those who are on the literacy group that worked on that. Debbie Higdon, who's our program manager for Language Arts, Matt Hayes, who's our program manager for History and Social Science, Carol Hunter, who is a community member, and Ricardo Castillo, a teacher at Cherokee Point. And this group pulled together some of the literacy ideas, they brought it back, it will be reworked in the larger forum, and then we'll keep moving in that direction. And with the board's approval, hopefully, of these, we will then use it as a model to create the indicators for the other areas of student growth within the operational expectation.
Yeah, Mr. DeBecque.
Well, somehow there was an arrangement where I was supposed to talk to some of you about critical thinking?
Correct.
And that didn't happen. So I don't, you know, if you wanna bring in the critical thinking ideas at the end, I'm gonna have some responses, but I'd like to be able to talk to you beforehand, so we can talk about, how do you measure a year's growth in critical thinking? What's the baseline of critical thinking you would expect? And, you know, how are you gonna go about that? There are tools for critical thinking that I don't think we're teaching in the schools. And so if you, if you say, well, we're gonna have a kid grow in critical thinking, but they don't know how to prove things, except in geometry, or they don't know how to, you know, present evidence and comment on it, if there isn't a way for them to develop a pattern of critical thinking or analysis of the information that's given to them, they'll probably be as blind as many of us on issues where they just judge things on emotions. So I think if we're gonna teach critical thinking and measure it, we better know what we're talking about. And I, maybe I don't, but I'm not sure the staff does either, so I'd like to have some discussions around that.
And I certainly would like to discuss this with you after this meeting.
Yeah, anytime. I mean, I'm, you know that, I would just, the meeting was called at a time I was at another meeting, so I couldn't go.
And one more thing on the critical thinking issue, we've also partnered with San Diego State University. They have a critical thinking work group, and they're looking at the same ideas, how to build creativity and critical thinking, because that will be what the job force demands, as opposed to some of the rote memorization that comes with other measurements.
And what I would add to that is that it was because we shared our GSA II and all of our other Goals for Student Achievement with a number of stakeholders, including San Diego State, that they were able to crosswalk into this center that they're doing for critical thinking.
Well, yeah, but what I guess I'm getting at, and that's a thing that I, I actually believe that we need to think about, and I got a lot of this from State when I went there, but unless you have tools for critical thinking, you can't critically think. You know, you have to have, you know, those per diagrams, there's flow charts, there's all kinds of ways you can look at information and ask the question, does it make sense or not? And those people that are doing system flow charts know what I'm talking about, but a lot of people don't. And so if you're gonna do critical thinking, you have to have the tools. And if we're not teaching those tools, then I don't know how we can measure anything.
I'd have a copy of those meetings, please, when they're gonna be, and how to get people on those committees.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Meyer. Okay, now we'll move on to item E4. So, you know, we just had a snapshot of, you know, how our district's doing by traditional measurements in terms of student achievement, and we're talking about what we're trying to do to add a more complete definition of student achievement through the work of the task force. But we also know that we're sitting in this precarious position, that we have very little idea what our budget situation is gonna be next year. We're still trying to figure out what the 10-11 budget means that the state just passed. We've got Prop J on the ballot. We're not gonna know or have any sense yet of what our 11-12 budget looks like until we've got a new governor. So we're sitting here in this, in this situation where the only information we have to work on continues to be the information that we've had before, which has a staring at $140 million hole for 11-12. And we've talked about the items on the, on the list of how we might have to balance our budget if we're in that situation. And tonight, we wanted to get a special, you know, sense of what will be the impact of some of these, you know, potential cuts on our academic program and student achievement going forward. So Superintendent Koba and Dr. Meyer, if you'd like to.
To begin with, this is a discussion of things that we are not advocating for nor recommending. And to discuss them, we wanna share that these are things that will get in the way of student achievement. So to start off, I was asked to highlight some of the things that would have potential impacts on our educational program. Cuts that possibly would be needed to balance the budget in 2011, 2012. Recognizing that we have had, we have currently a $141 million deficit that must be balanced, we look to see over the, over five years, that we have had nearly $400 million in cuts, and in this fifth year, we anticipate possibly $500 million in cuts. As you, as you look forward, you can see that the spending of per pupil, the allocation per pupil, has drastically dropped. And this is an average that you see up here, so we have some schools that average perhaps 9,000 per pupil, we have some that hover around 3,000 per pupil. But this gives you an idea of what we had to work with in the past and where we are In previous years, if you've been part of these cuts, as we've worked on them, over the last three major budget cuts that we've all been a part of, you've seen that we have done a good job of trying to keep the cuts away from the classroom as much as possible. They still impact the classroom, because the support nets that surround the school are hurt, but we really made a conscientious effort to keep those cuts away from the classroom. Some of the things that you can see that we did, we cut administration, we cut support services to the schools, we reorganized programs, we reorganized our curriculum department, we reorganized quite a bit. We've reduced supplies at the site, we've seen an allocation that has dropped, we've reduced supplies here in the central office. We've made a great effort to cut outside contracts and to work with the people that we have here in the building, in the district, work with our talent here. And we've also done everything we could to use federal stimulus dollars and other things that have filled in some of the holes. We've had grants that have filled in holes, we've had things that perhaps will not last. So as you can look forward to the 100, and if we could just go back one, to the bottom, that's okay, the 134 million here in 2010-11, you can also see that we've had cuts, we've had cuts to bus transportation, we've had programs that are asking parents to pay out of pocket. We've also had reduced the school year by five instructional days, a tremendous burden to our system. And we've had other things that have been impacted, camp, teacher intern support, some of these vital programs that have made the achievement that we've had possible. So as, as we move forward, some of the things that- So as we move forward, some of the things that we have not even mentioned in past years that we did not want to discuss are now on the table. So we see some of these things, once again, we do not want, that we have to start thinking about and putting on the table. Teacher and certificated staff layoffs. When we cut programs, outside programs, when we increase class sizes, this means that teachers' positions are cut. And that we also are looking at classified staff layoffs. So we have more than 400 staff positions, people who staff our libraries, who work with our students, who care about their safety, vice principal positions, police officers. These are the positions that have provided a positive environment for our students. As you go to the significant class size increases, we have had the benefit of having, particularly in kindergarten to third grade, low class sizes in our district. We have often, we have also seen academic growth going up over the last five and six years. That attention to those early years is critical, we've seen that, and we've seen the benefits of that. So as we go through, you can see some of these options are abhorrent to those of us who care about kids. We've got reducing kindergarten as a possibility to half-day. Some of us went to kindergarten for half-day, but now we know through research that kindergarten extended time helps particularly those students who struggle with reading and language. And we know that although we haven't studied it as much, mathematics and the patterns that they work on at a younger age. So that's something that we're looking at. The vice principals, as I already mentioned, we have some here today who helped their schools get out of program improvement, they're instructional leaders as well. And then also, the elimination of high school athletics was a discussion, and these are some of the items that were on our list when we looked at it the first few years and were immediately taken off. So this is kind of where we stand today. We know high school athletics hurts, if it's cut, it hurts our college preparedness. Scholarships, colleges look for students who are well-rounded, so that's something we'll discuss a little bit later. And then also the cuts in counselors. If counselors are cut, many of our initiatives, particularly our A-through-G college readiness support program, will be greatly impacted. Counselors are those who place the students in the class, who check on them to make sure that they're on track, who have those conferences, and many more things that we don't see. Also, the closing of the school libraries, the cuts to not only the library text but the librarians, if that does occur, we know that it will have a negative impact on literacy on our campuses. And we do have research that we can provide for the board to read that correlates the libraries with student achievement. So these are some of the things that we look at that make it difficult to do what we do. And these three areas in particular are the ones that we focused on tonight, and these are things that we're asking that you help us think of solutions towards trying to find a way to avoid this. We have the impacts of the larger class sizes, particularly when we looked at the K-through-3, our English learners are more greatly impacted by the increase in class size at the kindergarten and first grade in particular at that level. Secondly, the impacts on standardized achievement tests. You heard Ron Rody just speak about how we've had growth, how we ranked number one in the large urban districts in California in English language arts, number three currently in mathematics. This is due to the great support networks that we've had that we're looking at here. And then also, if you look here at the college readiness, I mentioned it will impact our A-through-G rate. We have other things that prepare us for college, other programs we've discussed, our college and career and technical education program helps students, it gives them dual credit for college, it gives them hands-on activities. These are the things that the colleges look for. Our magnet program, you heard SCPA here tonight, our magnet program support things that colleges are looking for, and they really provide an enriched program for students. And then also, as I mentioned, the athletics programs, these are things that provide scholarships for students that help keep them coming to school. So these are things that have great impacts on what we do. And this is the worst-case scenario, these things that we're discussing tonight. Mentioning already the impacts on EL students, the foundational skills in the early years, the attendance impacts, I think we can move forward to the next slide, but recognizing that attendance is tied to some of these strong programs that we have on our campuses, and it's tied to some of the people in our libraries and the people in our health offices who ensure students come to school. A slide here showing you a kindergarten class with 15 students. As we know, the effect of class size is hard to measure, we know it has an impact. It's hard to determine when, and so it depends on the 15 students that you have in the class. It could be 15 to 16 that makes a big difference, but we know it impacts it, so it has a great, it has a lot to do with the dynamics of the room. But you can see here, the student, the teacher's ability to reach the students. And you can see here in the second picture, thank you Melissa, that has all of the students, and I kind of honed in on the kids in the back. This young lady here in the stripes, she's not looking at the teacher. And I say, it's a lot easier to not look at the teacher when it's a larger classroom, and those of us who've taught know that. And it really is, you know, optimally in the early years, you want to be able to reach every student. And not that this teacher isn't, but you can see visually the impact that this budget crisis could have. So I think we summed up some of the things that are discussed here, the impact on the principal and the workload if vice principals left, the campus management and safety impacts. If a school is not safe, students cannot learn. And the loss of the school resources, the librarians and others who greatly impact student achievement, and the loss of some of the teachers. If our class sizes go up, we will lose teachers at campuses, teachers who have connected already to our students. And as mentioned, some of these things were already mentioned, so I think we could go forward. But as we work towards enriching and broadening the curriculum, we know that these measurements and these things that we have up here make a big difference. So we say that cuts will be necessary, and we need to make a plan for how to do this. We recognize too that we're not just looking at academics, but we want to point out, we're looking at every department within our district, and we're going to look at everything very closely. But if we get to this level of where we are now, we really are going to be looking at a worst-case scenario. We look at ways to minimize student impacts, but we've been doing that for three years. So we do want to consider online options and different things that perhaps can expand our reach, but we know that there is no substitute for that online combination like we have at I-Hi with a teacher and a counselor. So in summary, we're certainly open to questions, but we were asked to provide some of the impacts that we could have as a result of the $141 million cut.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Meyer. We've got several public speakers, and I'm going to call them up first, and then we'll have board comments. Juliette Delapaz, Kathy Vienna, Terri Akins, Candace Guyer, and Philip LeBurd.
Juliette Delapaz, 9347 West Heeny, Santee, 92071. My name is Juliette Delapaz, registered credentials school nurse, and I'm here to give testimony on the budget impact on academic programs. This isn't the first time I've addressed the board superintendent about this issue, and quite frankly, speaking on it again, addresses the very impact that this has on the individuals who are committed to our students, their families, the staff of San Diego Unified. It chips away at us, little by little. I mean, we stand there as like the foundation for these students reaching their fullest academic potential, and we are the people who are the fabric of education. Without health, students can't be there to take a test. You can't measure academic performance for a student who isn't in class. We are, school nurses are first and foremost educators, and I was looking and seeing where we kind of fit in in this matrix here. But our curriculum is delivered in the conversations that we have with students, staff members, parents on a daily basis. My classroom has no boundaries. I brought some examples of students who wrote me letters, and I post them in my health office to remind myself why I get up every morning to fight this fight, to have these students achieve their fullest potential. Dear Mrs. Delapaz, thank you for coming to our class, you know a lot about the human body. Although the body's kind of creepy, it is interesting. Your friend and patient, Andy. And that's, you know, speaks to the stemming of skills and motivation and curiosity. This student wrote me, Field Elementary, the most healthiest school in the world. Thank you for giving us a very healthy school. You brought health to our school. A student here, picture's worth a thousand words. It's a heart with a tear, but he's smiling and he has a bandage. You are a lifesaver. And he has crutches, and he points to the crutches, so it must have saved something. Dear Mrs. Delapaz, I hope you will do very good this year. We all hope that you'll do great and that you will succeed, from Sean. So the so what, right, is that school nurses really facilitate students reaching their fullest potential, and there's a Chinese proverb that states, "Those who say it is not possible should not interfere with those who are doing it." And so I just wanted to speak on that academic impact and the role that school nurses play in facilitating students reaching their fullest potential. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Juliette.
Good evening, thank you for letting us speak. Kathy Vienna, Jefferson Elementary School, North Park. I thought, I'm here to speak on behalf of school counselors, specifically elementary counselors, since I am an elementary counselor. I thought it'd be best to kind of repeat what President Barrera said at his State of the District speech last spring. I had invited him to come to participate in our Tariqamisa Foundation presentation last October, and during the presentation, one of the questions asked was, how many of you, fourth and fifth graders, about 120, how many of you have had a friend or relative die due to violence? And about half of the students raised their hand. And so at that time, I talked to President Barrera, and I said, you know, this is a teachable moment where we can take those students and, again, put them on this path or the other path. And that was our time to work with those students to make sure that we can end the cycle of violence. Unfortunately, with counselor cuts, it gets fewer and fewer of us to deal with bigger and bigger numbers. Counselors deal with academic career and social emotional development of all the students. Our strength is getting to know our students on a personal level and being proactive versus reactive. With that said, I'm very concerned to hear that possible solution to dealing with the shortage of counselors would be to bring in consulting counselors on a need-be basis, actually, when going to reaction again. Will a consulting counselor know Johnny's RTI level, Jose's recent benchmark score, whether or not Mary visited her incarcerated father over the weekend, or Tim visited his non-custodial parent? Knowing the answers to these questions can make a huge difference in attendance rates, graduation rates, or suicide rates. We're already heading in the right direction, please allow us to continue to educate the whole child. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, my name is Terri Akins. I live on 6761 Amherst Street in San Diego. I am a registered nurse, San Diego Unified, a school nurse. Currently, I work at Wilson Middle School, which is a very high-need school. This year, I'm there five days a week because the principal has budgeted accordingly because she respects the health profession as a school nurse. Last two years, I've had four schools for each year, and so I would run from one school to the next school to put out fires. I've had several diabetics, I've had several EpiPens, I've had a few crises, asthma attacks. The parents are always coming in the office saying, "We're so glad that you're here." And even today, I didn't even know I was going to come in here today, but even a mother came in today, she goes, "Oh, you're here, I'm so glad you're here because this school is so needy, we have so much problems at this school." So I want to ditto what Juliette said, but I just appeal to you to please keep the school nurses at San Diego Unified. They help with the education of the children, they keep them healthy. Sometimes we're their only primary physician or person that they will see or talk to, and the parents also, so thank you.
Good evening, I'm Candace Guyer. I'm the school nurse at Rodriguez, McKinley, Florence, Jefferson, and Washington Elementarys. And I'm also a parent of a third grader at McKinley and a Sikh student at Lindbergh-Schweitzer. And I came to you to talk numbers a little bit. I wanted to take a look at where our district stands in comparison to a national standard. There's, the National Association of School Nurses has a recommended school nurse-to-student ratio that they've established, which is nationally recognized. It was published in Healthy People 2000 and Healthy People 2010. So just taking a look at my assignment, which is fairly typical of the rubric, assigning school nurses in comparison to that recommendation. I am one school nurse for approximately 2,000 students. The national ratio recommended is one for every 750 students with very basic needs, your healthy kiddos. This ratio that the national standard recommends is dynamic, depending upon healthcare needs of the students. I, for example, have four diabetics, over 125 asthmatics, over 20 children with severe life-threatening allergies, seven with seizure disorders, 26 with ADHD, three with cerebral palsy, and I mean, I can go on, but I'll stop there. So these ratios change in terms of the national standards. You go down from, to one nurse for 225 students if you have a student who requires daily nursing services, one to 125 for more complex nursing needs. And if you run through and sort out my students and their needs, you're looking at about, I'm doing the job of approximately 4.2 nurses. So that kind of puts into perspective where we stand in terms of national standards. If any one of us were admitted to a hospital, there are laws that would mandate how many people a nurse can take care of. I feel our students are entitled to those same protections. And if you look back again, as some of the other nurses said, to accountability, national standards, I have several schools with economically disadvantaged students and not meeting their targets, often they don't have access to healthcare, and you're looking at their primary care case manager in a lot of cases, so I just wanted to point that out. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
My name is Philip LeBurd, and I'm a parent, I'm also involved with the NAACP. And what I want to talk about is getting the community to be more participant in the budget issues that we are facing. I think that the district has been doing a very great job of reaching out to the community, getting the community to be more aware, getting the community to be more involved with the issues. And so we are at a critical point, and it would be a shame for us to go backwards at this juncture. So one of the things I feel that we can work on, we can get the community to assist where they can. Obviously, we are not professionals, we don't have the expertise, so the expertise comes from the professionals. But what the community can do is, whether it's contribute to our books, material, other supplies, so we can use the resources for the professionals in the classroom, and the, you know, the community is willing to give, there are lots of people who have extra... know, the community is willing to give, lots of people who have extra resources that they wouldn't mind giving. One of the issues, another issue is about the Plan B, excuse me, Proposition J. We have to make a determination. Are we going to invest in our children at this stage and provide them with the kind of opportunity that they're going to grow up to contribute and be productive members of our society? Are we going to allow them to fall by the wayside, end up in prison, which end up costing us more money? And someone in prison really don't contribute to society. So I'm urging the public, I know everybody has their own opinions about taxes and, you know, that's a very controversial thing, but think about the kids. Think about what we can do for them. A couple extra dollars, what is it, $68 or $80 or $100? Yes, times are tough and most people on a budget, but the investment that we can make for our kids is going to pay back many times over. Like I said, I want to thank the supervisors and the board members for reaching out to the community, and I hope you can keep doing that. And so let us know that we can contribute and you appreciate what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Pat Washington, Kiki Ochoa, Guillermo Gomez, Vincent Williams, and Bobby S. from Lincoln High.
Did you want me to just go ahead and start?
Go ahead. Do it.
Good evening. My name is Pat Washington. I live at 4537 Alamo Drive in San Diego. I want to say hello to the Board President, Superintendent Cobra, and the Board of Trustees. I have several things to say. I will leave some of them off. One of the first things I want to say is that I applaud your efforts in the past years to keep these budget cuts as far within the classroom as humanly possible. And I'm not delusional, I promise. I know that we're not entertaining the possibility that you're going to eliminate librarians and nurses and eliminate entire athletics programs on a whim. I know from going to so many meetings and being involved with so many groups that these are really serious considerations, that you actually are faced with these possible cuts. So that's me, Pat Washington, who knows that you're seriously facing these possible cuts. I'm the same person that walks in my neighborhood in Rolando and walks in southeastern San Diego, who actually, and also go to some of these meetings in the community, with people who actually believe this is a scare tactic, that you're just doing it to fighting people and to accepting another budget cut, I'm sorry, another tax. So somehow or another, similar to what Philip is saying, we're not making the connection with the crisis that we're facing. I say, we all are facing this crisis. We're not making the connection with what we are facing and the average voter who's being asked to vote yes on Prop J. So as a concerned citizen, as a grandparent, as someone who knows you're not pulling, I don't believe you're pulling our legs, I really don't. We've got to figure out why so many rational San Diegans believe that you're doing so. I'm concerned about that, and I knock on doors almost every day. My next point is that absolutely, this district is doing phenomenal work in making sure that we move A through G, that course sequence, forward. I'm a part of meetings along with other people where community members, parents, and students are actually sitting and talking with teachers and talking with principals and talking with district staff about how we can do a complete program to make A through G something that all of us buy into, from businesses to nonprofits to school districts. We absolutely have to make that connection to the average citizen in San Diego, that same citizen who doesn't understand or may not believe that Prop J is necessary. Thank you for everything you're doing to protect education. Help us, who are trying to help you, make sure all of our friends and neighbors and family members understand what this crisis is really about and absolutely protect our efforts on A through G. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eduardo Enrique Ochoa. I'm a teacher at Lincoln High School here in the San Unified School District. First, I'd like to add to what Pat just mentioned regarding scare tactics. I know it's not a scare tactic because when I walk into the office at the Center for Social Justice at Lincoln High School, there's usually a secretary that usually used to be there last year, has to be rotated from the different centers. I know that it's not a scare tactic when we have classrooms that are empty because we don't have staff members to teach in those classrooms. I know that it's not a scare tactic when every single year that we've been there and there's been budget cuts, there's teachers that have been pink slipped. Those pink slips have been rescinded, but those teachers have opted to go elsewhere because they're making sure that there's food on the table for their families. So when those scare tactics are thrown around, I know that they're not. Their budget cuts hit home. We've been doing more with less at Lincoln High School. Eventually, the repercussions are going to be evident maybe two, three years, four years down the road. So in regards to scare tactics, this is very real. Also in regards to Prop J, I think it's important that our district makes sure that the education is not a privilege, because unfortunately, a lot of people think it's a privilege. Because if it was a right, this issue wouldn't be discussed. Because we know that every single student in our state would be afforded an equitable education and we would fully fund education. So the fact that we have to have this discussion is proof that it's not considered a right by a lot of people. It's considered a privilege that can be taken away and cut on a yearly basis. So that's an unfortunate truth. And to the county residents that are going to hit the ballot box on November 2nd, I implore that you invest in our future. I think any society that puts money into education is not making a mistake. History will tell you so. So again, on behalf of the Association of Raza Educators, we commend the Board for pushing our city to invest in our kids and our future and our education. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Guillermo Gomez. I'm a 16-year public educator, veteran, 16 years, and currently teach at Lincoln High School. And I'm here to advocate for public education. I'm here to ask my fellow San Diegans to stand in solidarity and support Proposition J, to defend and uphold the morals of public education. And I know although we are in a financial bankruptcy, we cannot let ourselves fall into a morally bankruptcy. We know that public education might be one of our last cornerstones of democracy. And many of us here have used public education to reach middle-class level. We cannot forget that there are a lot of students that need these institutions to remain the best they can be so they can also have the opportunity to join the middle class. And although our own personal kids would be okay, because we know that we have gained enough social and cultural capital to pass that on to them, but I'm here to defend the students that don't have that privilege. And like my colleague said, education should be a human right, and education should not be a privilege. So hopefully, we can go back and really think of our moral responsibility to our youth, to the people that came before us and the people that will come after us, to uphold public education. So please, support and pass Proposition J. Thank you.
I'm a sophomore at Lincoln High School. My name is Bobby Sayovong.
And I'm a 10th grader, sophomore at Lincoln High School. My name is Vincent Williams.
And we're here to support Proposition J, which is a tax on land to raise money for schools.
Fifty million.
Yeah, for 50 million.
To raise 50 million dollars for schools. And the reason we want to raise this money is for, like, it'll help the students as, like...
All right. Like, why not raise the money for schools, right? Because if you guys cut the budget on us, like, the police officer is going to be taken away, right? So where's the safety at? And the nurses are going to be laid off too. So what if somebody gets hurt, right? And like, I saw on the projector earlier, like, we're not even going to be ready for college. Like, it's like, it might affect that. So what's the point of us trying? There's going to, we're not even going to be ready for college, right? And I wanted to like, call out Mr. John DeBeck for this because he said that, what's the point of giving money to people that won't even like, want to learn? What about the people that want to learn?
Well, I completely agree with what my friend here said. And it is true that some people that can't afford going to school, cannot go to school, but there are people that are in school that can afford it but don't take the education seriously. So we want to be able to change that and put people in school that want to learn to learn. And, yeah, that's all I got to say.
Right. And you guys are like, thinking that, like, the way you guys want to say is that cutting these budgets can help us learn. No. By cutting, like, taking away these teachers and nurses and police officers is just feeding fuel to the fire for us to like, like, most likely what's going to happen is, what I think's going to happen is that when you guys take these things away from us, like, the dropout rating is going to even, like, go higher, right? And I'm going to let him go on for now.
As more and more people get dropped out, like, the staff of our San Diego School Districts, more and more gang violence, shootings, criminal activity happens more on the street. And we want to be able to prevent that by keeping people in school in a safe environment, keep sports and stuff to give people something to do after school instead of going out somewhere to hurt somebody or get hurt by somebody. So we want to be able to keep people in school.
Our last two speakers, Michael Pallante and Jackie Misak. We'll let Michael go first, Jack.
I couldn't go away without you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Pallante. I'm a sophomore at Lincoln High School. I'm here today to support Proposition J. And, yeah, yeah, yeah. And Proposition J is something that will benefit us. I mean, like, our teachers told us that they're going to cut 150 million away from us, and that's a real big number. I even get shocked about that too. I think that even if it's just 50 million dollars that they're going to raise for us, I think that's going to be a good, and be a big impact to us. And I really think that it's going to help us in the end. And I really think that investing in education is better than investing in wars and other things that the government's spending money on. Like, if I was you, I would invest all the money into education because we are the future. And you're putting us in jeopardy, but you tell us that y'all are going to take that money away from us. Like, that's going to jeopardize us and y'all too. But we're the future and like, we need this. And all I'm asking is for you to support us. And when they take that 150 million dollars away from us, they're taking teachers, nurses, counselors, and other people that help the community. And, like, overall, like, basically, I just want, I just want y'all to support Proposition J too and help us. And, yeah.
Good afternoon or evening. I know most of you up there, so you're really in trouble. Hello, John Evans. I haven't seen you at one of my community meetings yet. And Richard, I know you well, and hi Sheila. And John DeBeck, we go on and on and on. I started coming to this Board of Education, to this very room, when my son Coleman was a senior at Lincoln in 1966. That's right. And he graduated, I'm bragging a little, but I'll hurry up in my three minutes because the main thing that I want to tell all of you, that I'm still here. I'm still here. Coleman will be 62 on November 5th. Solenta was 61 on September the 26th. Jennifer will be 60 on October the 24th. And my Julia, who was there for the walkout in 1969, will be 59. So you know what I told them? They can get old if they want to. But I was born in Chicago. So I want to be on more committees. I want to let you know that I'm still around. And I'm so proud that I saw young people. Because this is what it's all about. The one race that most of you don't even know about, and when I talk to young people now, and even those that admit whatever age they aren't, I say to them, there's only one race. What race is that? There you go. And then I throw a little, something else in. I say, except for the race, the Jesse Cat. Uh, what's his name? Odin. One. Jesse Odin. And, don't get rid of that. Don't get rid of anything. Don't get rid of anything. And you can, you know what I want you to get rid of? I take that back. I want you to get rid of the busing. I want to put the schools in every area, because they're public, with the same books and the same subjects. And we need feeder schools, which go into what used to be junior high. Now they're middle or charter or magnet. And they're bused. They wake them up at 5:00. So they kept the bus by 7:00. And they're asleep at 11:00. If a teacher doesn't like you on the black side of town, what makes you think they care on the white one? And I'm one of the few that's left to use that terminology, because most folks don't want to hear it. But I'm born in Chicago. I can't help myself. And I love all of you. And there's a reason I'm here. It's a total reason. God let me here for a purpose. And another thing I will not let you forget, my last name is Misak.
All right. Okay, Mr. DeBeck?
Well, first of all, Ms. Misak, I walked out in 1969 too. I wasn't in the district that year, but I remember, that was the year, 1969. Just a little correction of the date.
No, I said, I didn't say you went there. I said, I didn't go back.
Yeah, 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 okay. I'm not walking out now, so that's okay. All right.
You got to ask them.
Well, that's true. Okay. All right, now on this topic we're talking about. First of all, I want to say that I really appreciate the kids and the rest of the community that came forward to support Prop S. There are criticisms. J, well, they already, yeah, I wanted to vote together once upon a time, so thank you for correcting me. Anyway, we got, Prop J's the one I meant. And, you know, being senile is part of what I do, I guess. All right, but anyway, that's really important, that the community understands that it isn't the criticism of the proposition, but the benefits of the proposition that's really worth the vote. You know, there's some people that got suspicions, and we haven't allayed all those suspicions. I think we're going to, but we'll do the best we can to make sure that money's spent appropriately. We've got a committee that's going to look at it, and, you know, I think that will benefit our kids if we do it. We won't benefit our kids if we don't. So that's simple. Now, on the presentation. I would like to go back to Slide 4. I would like to go back to Slide 4. Uh, and that has to do with this year. And there's two topics there on the slide, I don't know whether you get it or not, but the first one is reduce the school year by five instructional days. That definitely is a savings of money. It came out of the shirts of the people who worked for us, the teachers mainly, but others. And also the health benefit reductions, which we negotiated, we also have made some savings on it. But now I get to a place where the cynic in me says, "Wait a minute, wait a minute. Go to the next one, cuts the bus transportation." I don't know that we saved the money we said we're going to save on that. I, I see it as a problem because there are people who would not go to a school because they didn't get the bus transportation and they're somewhere else. So maybe that data needs to be brought to us as, on an ongoing basis, not as a, as a promise or as a thing that we did. You know, I don't know what the number was, I can't remember it in my head, but let's say it was 20 million dollars. I suspect it's half of what we claimed. That's my honest belief. Which means that you have to add that to that 151 million dollars, because if you didn't save it this year, you got to make it up somehow. Okay, so that's something you have to think about. And, and I don't want to brag on something that we claimed we did that didn't realize a profit or a savings. Now we go to program cuts for student camps. Well, the accountants told us that you're going to save all this money because it costs this much money for all those teachers that are up there, and it costs a lot of money to take the kids up there. Well, the money you take the kids up there, you don't save, because you take them up fewer days, you're still taking them up. So there's no saving in transportation. So now then, you got the, the teachers. Well, the teachers didn't get laid off, so they're somewhere being paid, so that can't be saved. And so the question is, "Come on, guys, you all new number crunchers, tell me what the real savings are." Not what we projected the savings to be on a, on some kind of accounting table, but actually what are the real savings? Because if we didn't save the 10 million more there, then you got to add another 10 million onto that 151, and now it's up to 171. That's not good news. Now, we had good news today about our performance, and it seems to be that we're doing better even though we don't have more money for the last few years. That's not going to help sell the, this, this parcel tax. We got to understand that there's going to be some changes, and they're not going to be for the good for kids. A to G and other things that people want are going to have to go away. Class sizes are going to have to go away. And if you look at that long list, which is coming up, and I don't remember what slide, but let's do it together. It's probably Slide, uh, where is it? There's a long list. Larger class sizes, larger class sizes will only exist if you lay off teachers. You can't save the money unless you lay off teachers. I don't want to lay off teachers, but you see, you can't have large class sizes without reducing the number of teachers that teach the kids. It's, it's just plain numbers, you know? You take the number of kids and the number of teachers, and that's how you figure out how your class sizes are going to be. And if you're going to make the class sizes bigger, you're going to have fewer teachers. Just not kid ourselves, okay? So, yeah, we're going to have some stuff. And if you look at all those lists of all that 151 million, and I added just 20, 20 as a guess, then all those things that are on that list that we have as potential cuts have to be made. Or something else has to be found to substitute for those in order to get the balanced budget. This is not good times. And you guys are talking about, you know, save the counselors, save the nurses. Man, oh man, I'd love to do it. And I'm going to do my best to try, and I think these guys are all going to do the same thing. But the realities are that until we can find some other numbers to substitute for those numbers that are attached to those other names of program cuts, like cops and athletics and all the other things, there's going to, every time somebody comes down here and says, "We don't want you to cut that," and everybody applauds, I want to say to them, "Well, yeah, but what's, what's, what are we going to not do? What are we not going to do? And when's the time going to come when you're applauding for taking away something? It isn't going to happen." So the realities have to be said. I'm, you know, I'm, yeah, I'm for Prop J. I'm for adding another 50 million dollars and dropping that 171 back to 120? Or something better than that, if we can find some other cuts? But we've got to be realistic about this. We can't lie to people and tell them that it's all going to be good. Okay? That's the real issue. And I'm, and I can expect in the next few months, as we talk about everything, that I'm going to hear from everybody that doesn't want something to cut, but none of them will point to something else that they want cut. I don't want to do it. I don't think the board wants to do it. But we've got to find some money somewhere, and the tax, parcel tax is part of it. So, that's all I got to say today. But I certainly do want to have an update on those potential savings that we claim we're going to make, because I don't think they're real. And the sooner we know that, the better off we are. Because 20 million bucks down at the ending balance, the next year isn't going to make, it's feeling very, much better about the next year either. And I, yeah, I'll be here for that. Okay?
Ms. Jackson?
Um, thank you for the presentation. And first, to the speakers that spoke, thank you very well, and thank you as well. And the people from Lincoln, don't forget, our town hall meeting for that area is just coming Thursday night at 6 o'clock at Porter Elementary, so I hope to see you there with your friends and family. And we do need to pass Prop J. But outside of passing Prop J, we're still going to have anywhere from 90 to 120 million dollar deficit, depending upon what things we have. I would like to call attention to Page 4, because Page 4 is something that's real that you can tell people about. When you look at Page 4, you see that our allocation in the state have gone from 5,700 down to 4,900 per student that is already received from the state.
It's 3 on this one.
Page 3, okay, on Page 3.
Page 3.
Yes. Um, so, so certainly, there will have to be cuts made. But I think, and as we're talking around the town and about what are we looking at cuts, um, I still disagree with everything that's on this list, most of us do, but I do not see the things being added. Again, I encourage the staff to be very creative. Again, our primary mission is to educate children. Uh, what with the county, to look at how we can streamline HR, finance, communication, all of those entities that are here at the central office, people are asking questions about them. And I think that it's good in the public eye to talk about how we're looking at them. Not just to maybe say it, but include it on the list. I still don't see those items on, on the list. And while it's not going to be some savings, a lot of savings there, maybe in some cases, because we have trimmed, the public still needs to hear that, because all they're hearing right now is we're going after schools. Okay? And they need to hear that we can be very creative again, because I, I talk about the fact that some people work with the county, that I talk to the county, combined with the county for our HR, combined with the county for doing our finances, go back to the city again about our busing situation. Even though we've trimmed busing, we know that we have the largest maintenance operation for busing around, maybe larger than the city. Capitalize on that, okay? Look at how we can also generate revenue. I know that some of those things are in the pipeline, but I think that if we include those things in our conversation, it makes people feel better than just keep saying we're going to cut things from our classrooms and from our schools. But they know that we're working on other things that are going to generate revenue in other areas and make it more palatable to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Evans?
Well, this is definitely a, a good news, bad news scenario. We've heard today about the progress we've been making. We've been making steady progress over the last few years, improving the student achievement. And if we are to lose 142 million dollars, uh, the, the chart will go like this, and then it will go down like that. There's no way to avoid that. Last year, uh, is after, the year before, making tremendous cuts, and again, last year making cuts, what we tried to do was prioritize. We said, "This is what we consider most important, and second most important, and third most, and we're going to start with the most important and save that and move down the list." We don't even have that option this year. The things that are put on the list, and yes, the list can be tweaked a little bit one, one way or the other, but basically are the things that are legally or contractually allowed to be done. Legally, there's not a law that requires you to have a nurse, to have a counselor, to have a police officer, to have a librarian, legally. But, in any practical sense, of course, we need to have every one of those people there to, to be able to run a school effectively. So, we are, we are standing at this point right now. It's, the problem is that a lot of people around the community are in denial, because they see that we have struggled in the last couple of years to keep the cuts away from the classroom, and they don't necessarily believe that we are facing this crisis. The problem is, when it happens, when people see the cuts, it will be too late. There is something that we can do between now and, and November 2nd. On November 2nd, we first of all get to vote for, this is our problem. This is not the board's problem, it's not the staff's problem, not the teacher's problem, not just the, uh, parents' problem, it's a problem of the entire community. As a society, do we support public education? Or do we want to become like a third world country where a select few go to very nice private schools and you have a poverty level, uh, public school system? That's what we can end up in. And, and we can just look at the charts. California in, in the previous generation, being one of the highest, uh, ratios in terms of per, pupil spending, we now rank 47. So we've seen us, ourselves fall off a cliff, and we have to turn in another direction. Our problem right now, and the reason why we're bringing this up, is that as soon as December 15th, we're required by law to submit a budget to the county to tell them with this 142 million dollars exactly how we can cut it. We can't say we hope the governor will give us more, we hope this or that happens. We can, however, take into consideration if we pass Proposition J. Proposition J is the first 50 million, it's the first major step towards, towards the solving the problem of our school funding. And, you know, the problem is that people don't feel it right now. If, if we were this week saying, "Okay, we're going to go into the schools and take away the teachers, the counselors, librarians." If we were to say, "Next week, we are counseling football season for the rest of the year." If we were to do all of these things, people would realize what's going on. But that's the actual reality that we face. And so we really need to pay attention. We can't blame Sacramento, we can't blame Washington, we can't blame any particular entity. This is our responsibility. If we really want to protect public education, we have to stand up and do something about it. Which is why, as board, we decided to put Proposition J on the ballot, to actually give the public a chance to weigh in on whether or not they support public education. The important thing here is that we're all united. All of us really believe in public education. We're going to work to preserve public education. I know when people saw the, the movie that came out, Waiting for Superman, you saw the pathetic situation, uh, which basically pointed out, there are two ways you can get a good education. One is by happenstance of your birthplace. If you happen to be born into a wealthy suburb, you'll have a decent education. And the other is, for everybody else, if you win the lottery, if you win a lottery of 1 out of 30, or 3 out of 300, or whatever it is, you will have admission to a select school that is doing very well. The rest of you, you lose the lottery, you lose out. This affects all of us. And this, this is not acceptable, that we, we put our, our kids' education in the hands of chance. We're all in this together. I really appreciate the, the community members who have come out and spoken. I appreciate people that are going door to door and talking to people about this, that are supporting the proposition. We need to get the word out. Every cut we make, and I think this is one of the things that, that came up when, when people were talking, was if you cut this, then you'll have this impact. And that's absolutely true. If we, um, cut, um, police officers, our campuses will not be as safe, and we've heard a lot about that lately. But if we don't have counselors, uh, vice principals, nurses, and everybody else, the schools actually be more dangerous places. We're going to need more police officers on the campus rather than fewer. If we don't have the nurses, there are not as many students who are going to be coming to school. If we don't have the counselors, we're not going to be, have our students ready for, to be accepted to college. All of these drive us further and further down, and we have to decide, do we want to turn the boat in the other direction? Do we want to actually do something to save our public schools? When I came on the school board two years ago with Mr. Barrera, the idea was we could really improve public education. At this point, we are talking about saving public education. We have teachers and staff who are doing everything they can possibly do with the resources that they have, and we cannot abandon them at this point. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Dr. Evans. I don't have much to add. I mean, our, Dr. Evans, Ms. Jackson, and Mr. DeBeck have been incredibly articulate, and there's no way to be more articulate than what we've heard from, from our community tonight. We've got three weeks in this stage of the fight. For the young people that were here, um, we can always look to and be inspired by the life history of Ms. Mieschak, Mr. DeBeck. They took our community through, uh, a, a time where we were at a crossroads, and we could have, um, you know, uh, become, uh, a society for the worse. And we came together and we made ourselves a society for the better. And for the young people who are here today, this is now your fight. This is your time. I see that you're here and fully engaged and ready to have that. We're going to work together as a community. We've got too much to celebrate, too much to be proud of, to let it go. The achievement that we've seen, the gains that we've made over the past couple of years with less resources, have happened because of the work that we've done together as a community. We're going to get through this crisis because of the work that we're going to do together as a community. And we will make our public schools great going forward, partly because we've had to be tested and we've had to go through this fight. And so, you know, I just, it's inspiring to hear the young people and to hear everybody else who's here and ready, and, and already making the argument to our whole San Diego community that we've got too much to be proud of here to let it go. So thank you again for being here tonight. Okay, we will now move on in our agenda, and we've got some, some important issues left. Let's start with Item E5. So this is the, uh, public hearing for the renewal of the ADEO Charter School.
This is a first hearing, not a, not a decision hearing.
It's the public hearing, yeah. So, Superintendent Coben?
Thank you, President Barrera. I have Moses Aguirre from Charter School Office to introduce a commentary from the Charter School ADEO Charter.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent. This evening, we have one Charter School item for your consideration. It is a public hearing for the renewal of ADEO Charter School, which was submitted on October 4th, 2010. Again, this is only a public hearing in order to comply with the education code, in order to consider the level of district teacher, other district employee, and parent support for the renewal charter petition submitted by ADEO Charter School. Again, the board action, board action is not required at this time, and this matter will be brought back to the board for a future date for action after staff review.
Thank you, Moses. Yes.
Okay, I want to know whether or not it's required that we have two hearings. I, I think we have a history of success, that we shouldn't sit here and go through the motions of a lot of stuff. You know, I'm, I'm personally ready to approve the charter today, and I see no reason why we should delay the proceedings. If, and if that, if our legal department thinks we have to wait, then so be it, I guess, but it seems to me like a pretty, pretty much waste of time to go through a long presentation on something we agree on in the first place.
Okay, can we get some advice, Mr. Brazil?
The law, the law requires that you have a public hearing within a certain timeframe, and then a longer timeframe to make a decision on the petition itself.
Then allows it, or requires it?
As long as the second thing happens after the first thing, for the board to consider that, uh, public input, um, then you're not under any, under any legal obligation to, to not act. However, the agenda does not say that there will be action to approve the petition. It says it's a public hearing, and, uh, staff is in the process of reviewing the petition right now.
But our board regulations and rules say that we reserve the right to take action at any time on an agenda item. That's in our bylaws.
My recommendation is that you not take action on the petition, because the agenda is not described.
Then, then the board to decide?
Yeah. Okay. We've got some, uh, we've got some speakers. I'm going to call up, thank you, Moses. Tim Tudor, David Kassada, David Nuffer, Jane Garansky, and Richard Ross.
Hi, my name is Tim Tudor, and I reside at 703 Torino Drive, San Diego, California, 92106. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent, and District Staff. For the past six years, I have served as ADEO School Site Coordinator, overseeing instructional staff and day-to-day operations of the school. I am pleased to stand here today, knowing that ADEO has successfully transformed the lives of thousands of students who needed something different. ADEO's unique, personalized design focused on student re-engagement, in an effort to curb the dropout rate and mold confidence- curb the dropout rate and mold confident, successful citizens. In order to do the hard work of transforming our students' lives, over the current charter term, we enhanced our instructional program by implementing several engaging features. The use of Naviance, an electronic college and career data management system, over the past three years at ADEO has given our students informed and guided pathways to successfully plan for and transition from high school to attending four-year universities, community colleges, vocational schools, or entering the workforce. The ADEO class of 2010 saw acceptances to almost every UC school, several Cal State schools, and many private colleges and universities. ADEO's rigorous UC-approved coursework has prepared countless students for the challenges and opportunities available in life after high school. The implementation of NWA, Northwest Evaluation Association's MAPS assessments in 2008 gave our staff new local assessment tool in the areas of mathematics, reading, and language usage. On average, students enter ADEO 2 to 5 grade levels behind in both English and math. This program allows our staff to chart and measure individual student growth while pinpointing specific student learning issues. It is exciting to see that so many students who once struggled in these subjects are now meeting their annual growth goals. The integration of school pathways in 2009 revolutionized the way we did our work. It gave us a new student information system customized to the personal learning environment ADEO embraces, and Report Writer, a program that took the hard copy-file maintenance requirement of independent study teachers and made it electronic, streamlining our work in an effort to give more time for instruction and less for administrative tasks. In 2010, ADEO opened three learning centers at Westfield shopping malls. Westfield's strong support of our program has led to a work opportunity model where students are going to school and working conveniently in one place. This environment gives at-risk students incentive to stay focused on completing high school while meeting their different responsibilities. ADEO is taking work experience to a whole new level. ADEO's success was recognized in March of 2010 by the California Award for Performance Excellence Program, the state-level Malcolm Baldrige National Program. This accomplishment recognized ADEO's excellence in leadership, strategic planning, customer-market focus, measurement and knowledge management, human resources, process management, and results. In addition, ADEO received a six-year term of accreditation and a 9 or 10 summer school ranking over the last four years. ADEO is a school that you can be proud of and one you can count on to continue to re-engage at-risk students and make them success stories. Thank you.
My name is David Casada, and I live at 9 Plaza, Manzana, Alpine, California, 91901. Unfortunately, I can't vote on J, but I have friends who can. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. As a current member of ADEO's Board of Directors and a high school teacher for over 25 years in San Diego, I ask that you renew ADEO's charter so they can continue the extraordinary work they do in serving an at-risk population. ADEO Charter School is a school that transforms young lives by providing a unique alternative educational environment for students whose academic and psychosocial needs are not met by traditional approaches. ADEO is committed to the development of a personalized instructional program that demonstrates positive outcomes for each and every student. As an intervention program, ADEO motivates and inspires students who are academically at risk and gives many of San Diego students a second chance to be successful. ADEO is a great educational option. It is amazing to see students that come in so lost and soon become re-engaged and lead with a sense of self-worth and accomplishment. ADEO is strongly committed to serving the needs of all students enrolled in its program. The faculty and staff are some of the best you'll ever find. They are successful, committed, relentless, and passionate about what they do. ADEO is an exceptional school that last year received a similar school ranking of 10, and, as Tim stated, the California Award for Performance Excellence Eureka Award. I urge you to renew ADEO's charter so that this exceptional program can continue to make a difference in the lives of our students in San Diego. Thank you.
President Barrera, Superintendent Koba, members of the Board of Trustees, and the two upcoming members of the Board of Trustees, the representatives, and the administrative staff, thank you for allowing us to come here to talk to you today about ADEO. My name's David Nuffer. I live at 874 Cordova Street in San Diego, California. I have been a part of the advisory committee to the Charter Schools, San Diego, and to ADEO for 15 years, and this year, I became a member of the Board of ADEO. My company is called Nuffer Smith Tucker. It's a public relations firm. Our company's been very active in business and civic affairs and educational affairs for about 35 years. We're the oldest firm in San Diego, we're the largest. As a matter of fact, going back before you were all born, except for John. Back in the '70s, our firm wrote the marketing program for the integration of our schools to the busing system, which you may recall, or may or may not recall, but that was a great moment for this school district. Our job at ADEO is to transform young lives, and that's what we think we're all about. It's an innovation program, intervention program, and educational option that gives students a fifth-year high school and a second chance to be successful academically. At the graduation ceremony for ADEO, 85 of those young people, a couple of months ago, I donned a cabin gown for the second time in my life, and I got a chance to stand there and shake hands with these people as they got their diplomas, and as almost all of them went by, I said, "Be proud." And it's hard to describe their reaction, because when I said that, their eyes kind of sparkled, and they said, "I am." It was really an uplifting moment for me. I've offered my time to ADEO and the Charter School because I'm deeply impressed with what we do for the San Diego's young people and their families, and that's why I share my valuable time with these people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President Barrera, members of the board, Superintendent Koba. I'm Jane Garansky. I live at 4867 Coronado Avenue. That's 92107 Ocean Beach, where they say it's an attitude, not an address. I am a retired superintendent and very happy to be a retired superintendent. I also retired from San Diego State University, where I was Director of Assessment for the Professional Development Collaborative. I am an ADEO founding board member and have continued to serve on the ADEO Board. The focus of the school is to serve students who can benefit from an alternative setting because ADEO provides the personalized small-group instruction by teachers committed to student success. It has transformed student lives by providing students with that second chance that you heard about, and even a fifth year, and also access to flexible scheduling. I personally have seen the gratitude of parents at graduations, and I think Mr. Barrera, Ms. Jackson, and Mr. DeBeck have all been at graduations, and you've seen firsthand how grateful the parents are that their student has graduated from high school. I am continually impressed at the highly professional manner in which the school business is conducted. ADEO was recognized last year by receiving the Baldrige Performance Excellence Performance Program Award. It truly is a model for reform, and there are many lessons to be learned by how ADEO is managed. Lastly, as a community person involved with the school for many years, I thank the board for their support, and also the superintendent for his thoughtfulness and care of the Charter School. Please renew ADEO's charter.
My name is Richard Ross, 412 F Street, Encinitas, California. And some of us are walking within the city districts for Proposition J, even though we can't vote, just to let you know.
All right.
I'm here to speak in favor of ADEO's recertification, but I'm speaking in behalf of an organization called Social Venture Partners. You may or may not know of it. Social Venture Partners is based on venture capital investment, except instead of in Silicon Valley, we invest in nonprofits in the community that we think are doing extraordinary work. There are about 130 of us in the San Diego chapter. It's a new international organization. And the way they came to our attention was, we—last year, our focus area was education. We had 47 proposals for grants. Through a very complicated, rigorous process, we winnowed those down over four or five months to seven. We made site visits to each of the seven, about six or eight partners each, and then invited them in for presentations. Based on that, we made two awards. One was to ADEO. The reason really was threefold. One is, they were innovative, but to be frank, so were four or five of the others. The second started to differentiate them. They actually measured a lot of their performance, or made attempts to, and they were measured by other people outside the organization who had no vested interest in them. It's unusual. And the third one was the clincher for us. They were interested not just in producing extraordinary results, but in building capacity. And one of our focuses is not just to support good programs, of which there are many, but to support people who are trying to produce results and build their capacity to sustain that. And in that way, they were somewhat unique. I'm sure most of you have heard the phrase, "Put your money where your mouth is." We did. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other board member questions or comments at this time in the public hearing? I think, Superintendent, what you're hearing from Mr. DeBeck is probably consistent with the rest of the board, that, you know, we're going to strongly support this effort, and so the sooner that we could get the analysis.
We'll accelerate the review and bring it back.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, folks. Okay, let's move on. Can we just get item F1?
Move to approve.
Information reports. Dr. Evans.
I'll just be very brief. One of the things that really impressed me this last couple of weeks was going out and visiting some schools, seeing Edison Elementary, where this made tremendous gains in test scores, and seeing the teachers working, collaborating together, a principal who's going into the classroom half of the day, every day, and doing a great job. And the other was with a math teacher at Mason Elementary, who was able to achieve 100% proficiency with his students. So, again, we keep talking about some amazing results in the district, and this is continuing to happen in places all over the district, and we just need to find how to export that to all of the other schools in the district.
Jackson.
Very quickly, the Crawford Cluster had their town meeting on Prop J, very enthusiastic, and it was a well-attended meeting. And the Lincoln Cluster, again, their meeting is going to be just coming Thursday at 6:00 PM at Porter Elementary Campus, and they're working additionally on Prop J, but also in a middle school for their particular cluster. And Morris Cluster meeting went well, but we lost power that night. We blew the fuse. It was so exciting. All right. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Mr. DeBeck.
Yeah. Well, there was certainly good news that we heard today on API, and I also enjoyed attending all three community meetings so far, UC Point Loma and at Cherokee Point, and we heard a lot from the community interest that they had about trying to help us with our pain. Speaking of pain, I have some. And the real problem is this, it's a governance one, and I got to say it. On September 28th, which is our last meeting, there was a decision made to exclude me from a closed-session meeting. And I checked, and it was done intentionally at the recommendation of our own legal counsel. But it's never happened in the state of California that a board member has been excluded from closed session on the recommendation of anyone. That's the decision of a board member. They get the right to decide whether they have a conflict of interest or not, and it's not a prerogative of any board to do that. Now, you can ask a board member if there is a conflict of interest, or you can ask them to recuse themselves if there's this possibility of one. But it is not correct, improper procedure, and the board really should know better than to exclude a member from a closed session. What happened was, there was two closed sessions that day. One was the one that I attended at the beginning, and then there was a second, non-noticed meeting held after the board meeting, and I was excluded on the recommendation of counsel, and I strongly object to that. I don't find any constitutional reason for that to occur, or any legal reason for it to occur, and I'm just registering publicly, you know, my protest on that as a violation of, I think, the rights of elected board members.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeBeck. Just very quickly, I had a great opportunity on Friday afternoon to attend the grand opening of the Culinary Arts Kitchen at Garfield High that was built with our Prop S and College Career Tech program. It's fantastic. We've got a master chef there at the school who's, you know, teaching kids basically their restaurant business firsthand. It's, you know, I wouldn't know these things, but everyone, you know, talks about it as a state-of-the-art kitchen. You know, people from around San Diego are coming to take a look at it. The thing that impressed me most was the vice principal—yeah, the food, the food was pretty good. The vice principal said that in the two weeks that the kitchen's been open, he's seen a level of confidence and engagement from those students that he hadn't seen, you know, prior in the entire last year. So, these college career tech ed efforts really make an incredible difference. I think are the future of what high school can be, and it was exciting to be there. I also, that same day, had the opportunity to be at the graduation ceremony for about 20 young people who just received their high school diploma through the Urban Core Program. So, the Urban Core is part of the California Conservation Corps. Basically, provides an opportunity to young people, for the most part, who were 16 to 24 years old, who had dropped out of high school, but now come back to the Urban Core, receive, you know, spend time in their education at a charter school, John Muir Charter School, graduate, receive their high school diploma, but also do community service work that's about environmental mitigation and environmental sustainability around San Diego. It's really one of the most exciting efforts that we have going in San Diego. Urban Core in a couple of weeks is going to lead us on a big tree planting in District D, but to see those young people overcome the challenges that they've faced, and to not give up, and their persistence was really inspiring, so I would encourage everybody to become familiar with the Urban Core Program. It was really, really terrific. Okay, we'll move on now. Can we get item G2, a motion to approve the scheduled opening meetings? Please vote. Okay, item G3, this is a proposal that I'm making. I just think that we need to—we've got a motion to approve. The proposal is that before any board member travels, goes for any sort of business trip that's paid for by the district, we as an entire board need to discuss it, and a majority of the board needs to approve the trip. So, that's the proposal.
Only, I think it should be done on a six-month basis, every six months. Like our calendar we just approved, for the next six months, it has all of our meetings. And I, rather than coming up every time there's a trip and having the board approve it, if we do it six months at a time, then it becomes part of our calendar, and I think that would be a better approach than just do it one by one by one. But to say, "What is the travel for the next six months for board members?" and bring it forth. it forth as one item at every particular time.
About that, I think we, you know, we have, I was checking on the budget, and we have a certain amount in that budget for needed travel, particularly through Sacramento or Washington for advocacy purposes. The, I think one way to handle it along those lines, too, would be if we were to, at the beginning of the fiscal year, to set a calendar for those events that we know about, that would be, that we could calendar and approve. But then if there are any changes to that in the course of the year, in terms of adding anything else on, then we would have to have a special vote on that.
All you have to do is say, excuse me, but all you have to do is say, "I'm planning to go to this meeting, here's the reason why I want to go", and bring, put it on the agenda. We all have the right to put items on the agenda, so if you have an anticipate, a future meeting, or a reason to travel, all you do is say, you know, "I'm seeing this meeting, it's coming up on my notices, and I'd like to participate." Then the board votes as a whole to say, "Yeah, it's okay."
Yeah. Well, I think doing it six months or a year at a time is better than doing it as, you know, things come up. With exceptions, when things-
So I'll ask for a motion. I understand, and certainly would support approving things six months out, but I also, though, would prefer that every trip, at least, you know, while we're in this budget situation, comes before the board for some discussion and approval, even if it's been approved on the six-month calendar.
If you want, I'll even tell you when I blew up my computer.
Yeah, exactly. We'll get that. So I'll pass the gavel here to Dr. Evans, so I can make a motion. I will make a motion that-
Motion.
Oh, we already got it. I made the motion.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Somebody can second it.
I second it.
Could you just clarify, repeat your motion?
Yeah. I move that we approve, that the board approve the policy that all board travel is pre-approved.
I read my board materials, you guys.
Okay.
It doesn't say how long or how far, it just says all board travel is pre-approved.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second.
I will second that. It's not a bar and blindly.
Okay. All right.
I read the board material.
Please, please vote.
Okay. There we go.
Okay. Terrific. And now we'll move on to item G4. This is a resolution in support of a nondiscrimination policy-
Blue approval.
Second.
Great. I'll finish, finish the sentence. So this is to support a nondiscrimination policy to ensure a healthier learning environment for all students, including lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning students. We've got a couple of speakers for this, but I'll just quickly tee this off by saying, we've had some really serious, really sort of unfortunate, not unfortunate, a tragic trend over the last year and increasing recently, about young people around the country who are actually committing suicide because of the situation that they're facing in terms of discrimination or harassment, often at their school. We are lucky that we've yet to have such an incident here in San Diego, but we don't need to wait for a tragedy to occur here in San Diego before we stand up as a school district and make sure that all of our students are protected. So that's the idea behind this resolution. We've got two speakers, Dr. Dolores Jacobs and Carlos Marquez. Oh, and we've got the blue sheet. That's right. I'm sorry.
I'm Dr. Dolores Jacobs. Many of you I know, some of you I don't. I'm the chief executive officer for the San Diego LGBT Community Center. We are here this evening to thank you for taking this matter up, to say we understand how challenging your job is, as is the job of the educators. Having sat through this meeting outside and watched it, the Herculean tasks that you are charged to accomplish boggle the mind. And we thank you for your work in that regard. Secondly, I know that you share our dismay about 11 suicides in the last six weeks nationally. And I know you share our horror at the number of 13 and 15-year-olds that were included among them. All of them as a function of bullying at school, as best people have been able to determine. All of them LGBT, or perceived to be LGBT. We appreciate your support. We appreciate your action. We very much look forward to working with you and the superintendent and school administrators to, as you said, Mr. President, ensure that we don't have to have an incident before we get even more aggressive here locally. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you. Carlos, Carlos Marquez.
I'm just ready for my support.
Great. Thanks, Carlos. We've got two speakers, Samuel Chu and Kristen Krieger.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of California Faith for Equality. We're a statewide interfaith network that represents over 6,000 clergy, people of faith, and congregations that care about LGBT equality. My name's Kristen Krieger. I am the San Diego Regional Organizer for CFE, and represent a local network of congregations that really care about this issue. I hope that each of you received the letter that we sent and submitted in support of this Safe Schools for All Students Resolution coming before the board tonight. We hope that you'll vote in support of the resolution, and that we can work with you, along with our community partners, the center, around implementing this, not only at San Diego Unified, but thinking about how to spread that throughout San Diego County. Really commend you in being leaders here locally and nationally on taking action on this national trend. As adults and decision-makers, it's our obligation to take responsibility around these issues in our schools, because if we don't, it's our students, it's our youth, who have to fend for themselves within their schools. So we support you, and we urge you to pass this resolution for Safe Schools for All Students. Thank you for the time.
Good. And if Samuel Chu is not here, we'll go to Mr. DeBeck.
Okay. I have a long-term concern over resolutions that have no action in them. Now, at the bottom of this, it says something about, "We're going to do staff training", and it also implies that there are some sanctions we'll apply to students if they violate our policy. But I think what we need to do is have a report back on the programs-
Yeah.
-and plans that will implement this particular resolution. Because I've learned, sadly, that when we place resolutions on, they're usually attaboys, and they don't end up with anything happening.
Yeah.
And in this case, while there hasn't been any local tragedies, there have been local incidents of serious nature. And I don't want us to just say, "Okay, we'll train a few staff people, and that's it, and then we'll just not have a policy that affects the kids and their discipline on whether or not they're actively participating in harassment." And I think we ought to have that program in front of us, and not just a promise that we'll look at it. It's like, "We're fixing to do it?" You know, I can remember how many times I'd talk to my kids about stuff, and then they'd say, "Oh, yeah, we'll take care of it." Unless you follow up to find out if it's happening, it's not going to happen. So we need a follow-up. Like, when? By March, we'll have a policy in place, and action, or sooner?
Yeah. And I, yeah, go ahead, Miss Jackson, I'll speak to Mr. DeBeck.
Okay. And certainly just to address part of that, because I received some several phone calls and emails about bullying resources for all children, other children. The public read this as just addressing the needs of the LGBT teenagers. There's been a tragic increase of teen suicides throughout our entire system. Our race and relations department, I did speak with them today, Mr. DeBeck, and they have been well-trained in bullying and finished their training for LGBT teens just last year. So, and they've been working with principals and staff around our entire district on all forms of bullying, including those that are related to LGBT, but those pertaining to special ed students, OBD, CD, and et cetera. I think what you're asking for is that we see a report of their training, and when it's being done, and what schools are asking for it, because I don't think that the board is aware, well, is aware of how much training has been gone on around. I'm not sure if that's what you're asking for, but I'm just saying, I think it would be good for the board to know the training that has gone on over the last few years, since our staff has been trained and been working with principals and teachers on bullying, period, not just the LGBT, but the various training for all the groups that they've been trained on, and how they're helping our schools.
That's not prevention, that's detection. And the concept that, if you do it right, if you're in the educational field, what you do is teach what you want the behavior of the kids to be, not catch them doing it.
That's what they have been doing already, Mr. DeBeck.
So, and I'll-
Thank you.
And I'm happy if Mr. DeBeck or anybody wants to, obviously, do an amendment. The last point of this resolution is to ask the superintendent to conduct a review of our programs and policies. I'd actually ask the superintendent to do that by appointing a task force that's made up of a combination of district staff and community volunteers. And then, you know, to follow Mr. DeBeck's point, to obviously, you know, report back to us in a timely manner about, you know, progress on updating our programs and policies.
I would just ask for the task force that are being developed for this district, that all board members know what task force are being developed and how people are appointed to them. I am up to here with task force being developed and not knowing who they are and how they are appointed. Okay?
Well, let me just, one more.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. But, you know, task forces are great, policies are great, but a plan is different. Now, if the idea, I get, we're getting a enrollment per court, and it tells we've got 130,000 kids. We really don't, the charters have 15,000, so we've got whatever number that subtracts. But I would like to know how we're reaching the 100 and whatever thousand kids we have, not how we're reaching the staff. You know, staff should, you know, should know already that, you know, discrimination and harassment's bad, and training them is nice, but I think you ought to have a program for kids so they understand that we're not going to accept it, and it's something that we shouldn't be doing in our society. And that's a lesson, not a policy.
Okay. Ms. Nakamura.
I would say that, actually, on this particular issue, the students are, in many cases, leading the way. They're ahead of the adults. They've formed LGBT, you know, the Straight Gay Alliance in many of our schools. And I know that, you know, at my son's school, there's a day of silence, actually, where the kids will carry around, you know, little whiteboards, and they don't speak in order to represent those who are silenced by this bullying. I do want to make sure, though, because it's such an element, I think, of all bullying that's going on, and it's a new aspect of it, and it's, in fact, part of the tragedies that we have seen, is the cyberbullying. And how can we, you know, address that? I think the cyberbullying does two things. I think, one, it obviously, most obviously hurts the kids that are involved, that are the victims of the attack. But I think that many times, kids think that they are simply teasing, and they hit that send button before they realize what the consequences can fully mean. And that's devastating for their lives. It can be devastating for their lives as well. Cyberbullying is a new phenomenon. Those of us in the adult world are not as familiar with it, but it's for our children who are what are called digital natives. It's a reality that they have, you know, experienced from, you know, from, some of them, from the time of fifth or sixth grade, you know, when they have email accounts and such. And parents don't necessarily know about that. Judge Link did a very good presentation at several of our schools regarding, you know, bullying that's going on on campus and what's happening. But I think the kids are ahead of us on this, and, you know, we should listen to them as well. You know, I encourage the use of students on many of our task force. And, you know, in fact, I appointed one to the superintendent's search committee with great success. They're very, very smart, and very aware of what is going on, and far more aware than we are. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to one of our students. Can you fill us in?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
As a student who has witnessed and been bullied for being of the LGBT community, I do, I would like to agree with Mr. Beck about asking ourselves, how are, you know, the students, how are they going to learn? I mean, this about, well, when you mentioned that you want to train teachers, I mean, the teachers do understand, but how can we, how can we train the students about what is harassment? And, I mean, that does, that is a bit difficult to do, because, I mean, it is, how can I put it? It is hidden in the school. It's taboo to talk about it in some, some schools. So it's, I mean, we're moving on now, but when, I just think that it's, it just needs to be mentioned, and there needs to be announcements about it, flyers, and not just little brief discussions, but actual lessons taught in class that recognize what bullying is and the effects of it. So, yeah, that's all I have to add.
Yeah.
Good girl.
That's great. John, did you?
Yeah.
You got it.
I just wanted to certainly agree with what the other board members and what Carla has said here about this situation, that really, we do need increased awareness, both on staff and among students. I know one of the things in some of the news reports is that, well, we didn't know that this was going on. And, you know, there's the traditional bullying of, you know, beating someone up in the playground is not the whole picture of what's going on. And as Nakamura mentioned about the cyberbullying, and we need a heightened awareness of how this works and how it happens. In terms of the resolution, I think, first of all, the resolution, yes, does express the will of the board, but I think it's also clear from the board members up here that we don't want us to say, "We're against bullying, and, you know, we're for good things, and we're against bad things." But we actually want to look at the implementation of it and see how that's, and get reports back on that from the superintendent about how that would happen. And, there was one other thought. Besides the implementation, we need to see what, well, I know it's a broken record, but basically, when we're looking at our budget, we're moving forward on college preparation, we're moving forward on athletic programs, we're moving forward on music programs, and we may lose all of this. Because if we do not have counselors, just a few counselors in school, we will have, if we don't have a race and human relations team, if we don't have any money to train and work with teachers, all of this that we're talking about will be lost.
So we've got a, I heard a motion in a second to support this resolution. No further comment, please vote. Great. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on. Item H1, our official Fourth Friday enrollment report. Superintendent.
We have a report from our chief information technology officer, Darrell Asay. He's been calculating the first four weeks and working with a demographer and academic and business teams to come up with the final numbers, and we'll let Darrell highlight them now.
Thank you, members of the board. Superintendent Kove, as you know, historically, the Fourth Friday is the official enrollment count for the school district. There's a lot of work that goes up to getting these numbers. In fact, the first 10 days of school, we actually do head counts manually across the district. We gather that information electronically, and they work with the area superintendents, the deputy office, to monitor these numbers closely, and then begin talking to finance and budget and human resources to make sure we're aligning staffing. All that's led up to the numbers we're reporting today, and as Mr. DeBeck pointed out, we, our total enrollment, which is inclusive of pre-kindergarten through grades 12, including charter schools and district preschool students, is 134,910 students. And that number is up slightly over last year. I think the numbers that we continue to focus on here are the numbers of K-12 students in our district schools. And those numbers are 116,317. And that is actually showing a decrease of 807 students from the 2009-10 school year. Another bit of information, I think that's key, is the total district enrollment, including preschool, for our district schools, is 119,480. preschool for our district schools, is 119,487. And if you look at those two combined, that's an 897 decrease, 897 student decrease over the 2009 school years. Mr. DeBak pointed out that our charters also have a number in there and they are enrolled now at about 15,423. This is an increase of 1,175 students over the 2009-10 school year. But we also wanted to point out that there are more charter schools in the district. Last year, there were 37. This year, there are now 41, so that there is some accounting for the increase in enrollment there. In your report, for information purposes, we've provided a breakdown of our elementary, middle and high schools with students that had more than 10 in growth or decrease in enrollment. And so you can look at the spreadsheets and kind of see where students are shifting, where we were on on our projections, where we were off. We've worked with the demographers' office. They've developed some very graphical maps that will really paint the picture. And I believe the next agenda item, Roy McPhail's going to talk more about that. And that's that's essentially what we have to report.
If I could add to what Daryl said, we've really streamlined the attendance process in the last couple of years. We have a centralized attendance office. We at one time guessed that was the demographer, was it the zangle operator, was it the pupil accounting? All of the confusion was everyone had a little piece. We've consolidated it to one. A couple of other points I want to bring up is that we try to dissect the numbers in a number of different ways. In the this report and the following report, we have some anecdotal information, but our largest grouping of schools is our 120-plus elementaries. And it was interesting when I asked Daryl to gauge based on any increases greater than 10 or decreases greater than 10, because those are kind of swing numbers in a rough way for adding or reorganizing schools. One-third of the elementaries, or about 40 odd, went up by greater than 10. One-third went down by greater than 10. One-third are actually between 0 and 10. So.
Balances.
That's two-thirds of our schools in kind of a blended area. We did, in fact, have a net growth in the elementary schools. We had a net loss in our middle and high schools. So you can interpret that in a number of different ways, but that's where the numbers are. And the the growth of the charter schools presents opportunities for kids. And I think that there is a correlation there that we need to recognize.
Mr. Beck.
Yeah, well, I I appreciate that getting information about enrollment is complicated and I like it, but I got to tell you that I'm to the point in my life and also in the time in the district that I think we're we should have real-time attendance, real-time enrollment. I mean, if a if a store can keep their inventory records and at the cash register, subtract their inventory and at the receiving dock, count the income, they know their inventory and then the only thing they need to worry about is how much got stolen. The very least we could do is be able to count kids as they came through the door in the morning, some technological way, and know they're there and be able to tell the school the ones that aren't there, so they can get on the phone and do something about the same day. It, you know, I I'm completely frustrated by the fact that that we we are talking about a lot of technology, but we don't have the technology to record the income that this school district generates by kids. You know, I mean, educational technology, and I know you're a leader in that, is fine with me, but management technology to generate that information, if we've if we've lost 1,000 kids this year, it really won't even matter if we raised our attendance by another 5%. But the but we're just basically sitting on, wow, wow, you know, it's not your fault. I think the board and the administration has to come up with a plan, that is, a plan that will give us real-time attendance information that we can use to get kids back in school when they're not here. And I and, you know, I appreciate, this is just a segue out of the data, but I think we really basically should know when a kid's in school already, not just because it's required for the October 31st report.
Yeah, Superintendent.
Mr. DeBak, I'm trying to clarify, this is an enrollment report, not an attendance report.
I understand, but it's all tied to one thing, kids.
Daryl can generate real-time tailored attendance reports. He does that today for the area SOUPs and, in fact, has been working with each of them for their attendance strategy. So this is a historical snapshot on a Fourth Friday.
You know how many kids? I understand that, but I'm but I'm talking, I don't care about this report. I'm using this report as a segue to that issue about income. What we will be saying, and we should be saying, is that we've reduced our income by $5,000 a kid, if you want to call it. 1,100 kids have left us this year plus. That's a lot of money, okay? Now, how do we recapture that money? Because we still have the same staff, even though we have fewer kids. So the very least we could do is think about it. Now, if you're giving real-time reports, the area superintendents, they're the wrong people. Usually given real-time reports to the schools so they can get the kids back.
And first off, I will tell you, we do have an automated system that take teachers take attendance online every day and that feeds that real-time data. Schools already run these numbers every day. School offices are required to run reports of the students that aren't there. They're also required to follow up on those absenteeisms to find out why they're not there.
How do we know that? How do how do we know that the kids that they're doing something about the kids that are absent? How do we know that, school by school?
I think that the area superintendents are also focusing on the schools as a cluster and focusing with the principals on the importance of attendance right now.
I don't think that's going to do it.
You know, I think there's work that's being done, but the systems are in place to get that information. We're also working on some reports that will be that will put those almost in a visual like those maps where you can hover over and see that data. The data is back is in the backend to do this work now.
That's all nice and fun. I love it. Beautiful stuff. You pick pictures of how many kids are absent. I want them back in school. How do you do it?
Dr. Evans, Ms. Nakamura.
Yes, yes. You know, rather than hector you about this data, I want to thank you for giving us a Fourth Friday report, which is a report that's required we file with the state. And I have to say that there have been for all the time I've been on the board, we've never gotten this. And it's something I've absolutely demanded. I can remember, you know, about two years, two, three years ago, I was beside myself because we didn't have, we were not allowed to have the Fourth Friday report for some reason. And, you know, this was, I'm just thrilled, this is really good data that we can use. And I believe that we have Project Recovery is still in force. Mr. Kove, could you describe Project Recovery and how we go about making sure that kids who are missing are returned to school?
Sure. We have, as I think the board may know, maybe the community not fully, that in the first week of school, after about day three, we begin sending teams out, deployed of business and academic folks to every class, every high school and work through the enrollment rosters. And at some point in time, we come across those children that are just simply not accounted for. And we begin the in-depth calling or review of data from the various printouts, whether it be transportation data, food service data, enrollment data, crosswalk those. And where we get to no answer still, we actually go to the homes, the residences, the apartments and knock on doors. And I just received today the Project Recovery report that we did for the first couple of weeks. The other thing we can do is I could ask area SOUPs and principals to come up here at another meeting and show you, we have made this a priority. Attendance is a priority this year and they all have strategies we're working on. It's more than just us, Daryl and I, talking about this.
You know, that's that's absolutely true. I've been invited to a couple of the the area meetings and, you know, heard, actually was invited to Lewis when they, you know, increase or came out of project, excuse me, not Project Recovery, came out of program improvement, I was invited, actually gave the superintendent flower, the principal flowers, but for their for their success in coming out of that. But the whole conversation was about enrollment and attendance and that push for that. And I've seen that at a couple of other schools as well, that they are really pushing hard on this attendance matter. But getting back to this report, Mr. Lagasse, thank you very much that, you know, that you're giving the board the respect and the tools to actually know where we're at with this. I think it's very interesting to see the different places where, you know, it's gone down and where it's gone up. And we do need to get after why. And, you know, and particularly, what is making this happen in particular areas? It's not it's not laid out the way I it's not what I would have expected, where the the red spots are not necessarily. Do you think maybe the magnet school transportation, has that had something to do with it? The now that we're asking parents to pay for magnet school transportation?
I think that can be a factor.
That might be an interesting thing to look at and see how much that is asking them to pay for transportation, whether we've lost enrollment that way. Okay, thank you.
Jackson.
For this report, what goes to the state, this determines how much funding we get. Is that correct?
This goes towards obvious ADA really determines our funding and those are calculated based on attendance figures at at P1 and P2, but they clearly are based on the actual enrollment of the the school district.
Okay, so is this the same as our P1 attendance? When is our P1 and our P2 attendance due at the state level?
The.
Amy, do you know when the P1 and P2?
What's the difference between this and the P1?
November is the P1 report and April is the P2 report. And remember, those reports include the actual, not just the enrollment, but the the actual attendance of the students in that enrollment calculation.
Okay.
So it's a combination of things that determine the funding.
Okay, and the reason I was asking, because I thought this was the report, but I was going to ask that the board, that we see the reports both in November and in April, because one of the concerns that I have in in my area is that at the beginning of the school year, our funding is based upon maybe your November numbers. And so, for instance, a school might have 800 or a little 800 students in in November, but by the time April rolls around, they have more. And and so, but their budget is based upon that 800 number that they have in November. When students are transitioning out of other schools and have to be accepted at their home schools, the home schools do not have a choice. We have to accept those students. And so we end the year, and last year, I had asked both Mann and Bell to keep the data, and both of them gained well over 100 students over the course of the year, coming back from schools outside of their community. And but their budget never reflects that. And their budget only reflects the numbers that you turn in in November. And I think that we had to find a way to help compensate these two schools when the funding, when the students come back, because the funding doesn't follow the students because it's a mid-year transition. Okay, so I'd like to follow up with that on our November and April numbers, please.
But they do happen, that happens second semester in high schools.
Yes.
All high schools get a second semester new new budget based on their new enrollment. There's some changes after the first report.
A couple of questions. Do we have schools where there's a pattern of enrollment increasing at the beginning of the school year beyond what we project at the, you know, based on where the school was at the end of the prior year? Do we have schools where, because I've heard about this, where there's a pattern of, basically what the school is saying is, you're consistently, you, the district, are consistently shortchanging us because you allocate to us a certain number of, you know, teachers. We know we're going to have more students and every year, we go through this process of the school year opens, we have more students than we than had been budgeted. And in fact, the, you know, the worst examples of this would be, we were forced to access teachers at the end of the school year who are on our staff and are part of our team. Those teachers are gone, go take positions at other schools. And then we end up gaining, you know, teaching positions once the school year begins, but we've got to bring teachers on board literally after school has started. They're new to our school, new to our team. If there are such patterns, you know, can, so the question is, do we have schools with patterns like that? And so rather than putting them through this sort of, you know, you know, situation every year, that we could, you know, make sort of more accurate predictions of where their enrollment's going to be?
I think you may, I think you may want to have Roy McPhail speak to that, who's coming up next anyway.
Yeah.
Talk about an enrollment capacity report.
Yeah.
Roy is the one who does the projections and matches them to the actuals.
Yeah.
I think the short answer to your question is probably yes. In fact, just recently, I prepared a report for the superintendent, looking at the last four years.
Yeah.
I think of our schools, looking at the projection versus the actual. And I think there probably are some.
Yeah.
Where we have consistently underprojected and probably some where we've consistently overprojected as well.
Right, right.
And we can certainly use that as we go forward into this year.
Okay.
To see, are we consistently doing that?
Okay.
Roy, do you have a sense, when you look at 180-plus district schools, are you talking 10%? 20%? Can you give the board a sense of that?
I would have to have looked at the report I gave you quite closely. I would say it's under 10%, though. It's a it's a small number, but I I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
Let me say this. The number is small, but the impact is huge.
Absolutely, yeah.
You were at the you were at the Lincoln meeting, I I think, when the the elementary schools brought that up as their number one concern, is the fact that each year, at the end of the year, they're told to access their teachers and they lose them and then they have to hire them back the following year. And there has to be a way, and I believe there is a way, that we can stabilize that, but it's based upon upon your your projections.
That's right.
But my my point is that even though it makes like a small number to us, the impact is huge.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I think you might find that a number of these schools are in the same community.
Yeah, yeah.
And and they feel, as the as the principal spoke that night, felt felt like, even though she's made success, she felt like they're always at a disadvantage. They cannot get a stable staff.
I can prepare a report for the board showing where we see those consistencies and and share that with you.
That'd be great, thank you.
And I don't I don't think it's only one community, because I'm hearing it in my communities too, so.
It doesn't matter if it's a wash, it's a matter of identifying the schools so that we don't.
Exactly.
But the other, there's another side to this discussion, that is, a school that has fewer teachers at the start of the year, but then there's another one that has more teachers than they need at the beginning of the year. There's a bunch of those, and I say there's a wash. So that's the problem. In other words, anytime you try to balance up all this stuff, you're going to have, the other half of the same question is also there.
Yeah.
There's some schools that become overcrowded at the beginning of the year, there's some that are understaffed. That's why we balance them after the first settling down period.
But the 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 point here is if we can identify individual schools, that we can make more accurate predictions. Not, I mean, I, you know, it's, I know that the, you know, trying to project enrollment is is complicated, but if we see sort of the same thing happening year after year, I think we can do something about it. The the second question was, and that, you know, relates to Mr. DeBak's point, so I visited Memorial Middle School yesterday morning. If there's any school in our district that cannot afford to lose resources, it's Memorial Middle School. Memorial is facing tremendous challenges itself, but the success of Memorial has a lot, you know, has a huge impact on the rest of the San Diego High cluster. So, you know, if Memorial's a successful school, parents from elementary schools that would feed into Memorial are more likely to, you know, want to send their kids to Memorial rather than put them on the bus, say, and have them go out of the community. The success of students at Memorial has a huge impact on San Diego High. Are those students ready and prepared when they get to San Diego High? Memorial's come through this process and lost four teachers. And the impact of that is not just that the class sizes are too big, you know, now at Memorial, but literally, you know, they've had to make so many adjustments that kids will start the year with a particular teacher, then be shifted to another teacher, then be shifted to another teacher, you know, all in the course of the first four weeks. So I guess, you know, you know, part of what I would ask us to do in this analysis is, you know, it's not just, you know, numbers or numbers or numbers, in this case, middle schools or middle schools or middle schools. If we've got particular schools that this process, you know, is going to have, you know, really strong impacts, can we take a look at that and can we be a little bit more flexible in the way that we go about this process so we don't have schools like Memorial that are in desperate need of more resources, losing resources, you know, as as we go through this process? So I don't know what your thoughts are.
I think we'll ask Roy, based on the conversation, to take a look, going back a respectable period. period, four years or whatever is statistically representative, at schools that have had wide swings, up or down, and then what is the residual, what has stayed somewhere in a very narrow scope, and make a determination of what that means. I also want to do this year is to work with one projection. Not a low, not a mid, not a conservative one projection. And we'll have to figure out what that means for our financial projections, but we just can't deal with multiple numbers here. You've got to get to the one right projection and use that for your funding purposes.
And I, you know, Mr. Burrow, I really do have to take exception that it's, I know Memorial's important and it's near and dear to you, but we have the same thing at Lewis. You know, it can be devastating, no matter what school it is, and you lose kids, maybe Memorial puts them on a bus and sends them to Henry, but then Henry kids end up, you know, going to private school or going to charter or moving out of the district. There's a whole continuum, and I think it's a crisis for the entire school district. What we're searching for, I think, is stability for all of us.
Yeah.
And it is, because you lose, you just lose valued, you know, community members, either, you know, by getting on a bus and sending their kids to another school, or completely moving out of a school district and moving to Del Mar or Poway or wherever it happens to be, and it creates uncertainty and crisis, I think, within a community, whatever it is. And it's important to look at, as Mr. Koba said, at large swings, no matter what the school is, so.
Yeah. I guess the point that I'm getting at, and I may agree or disagree with you, Ms. Nakamura, and I don't know if this is the time to debate questions of equity, but the point that I'm getting at is we've got district-wide policies where we're trying to, you know, to balance needs, and I understand that, but we're going to have particular schools and particular communities that I just think we need to, you know, rather than just saying, hey, this is the district policy and, you know, too bad, you're stuck, that we need to, you know, we need to have some flexibility and have an ability to, you know, to look at the individual needs of schools as we go about this. And so I'll leave it at that.
Just one comment about that, and I think that what this also speaks volumes to is the board's direction for cluster movement. And as we build our clusters and people in our community get engaged, then they return to the schools and the community, whether it's a Patrick Henry or Memorial or Horton Elementary in the South Park.
Scripps Ranch goes to Cathedral.
Right. So I think that is the power of our cluster, but our cluster has to have more structure, more organization, not structure in it, but more guidelines as to what they can go out and do so they can have these good conversations that are engaged in community to bring them back into the school settings. And I think this is an opportune time for us to have those kinds of conversations.
Okay.
I think the classic example is where we send kids from Hoover to Sarah and then the kids from Sarah go to Mission Bay. I mean, that's, that one drives me nuts, so.
Okay, thanks, Darryl. And Roy, I want you to stay up here, I think.
Don't mind us.
You're up next. So this is our assessment of our enrollment utilization of small schools. And Superintendent, do you want to?
This is a report that is triggered as a result of AP 3113. If you recall, a couple of months ago, we had the board to review and approve an updated procedure that we would use for evaluating changes in enrollment, how they mesh with capacity. And because we did this approval in the latter part of the summer, Roy, standing in front of you right now, typically in the regular cycle, this would come to you in June or July. But the point tonight is just to show you how schools are breaking down between available space and what their actual enrollment is, and use this as a strategic document for evaluating changes to schools, reconfigurations, closures or alignments in some way, shape or form. We have to do this on an annual basis, so it's real-time information to the board.
Okay. Yes, as Superintendent Koba said, we recently got the administrative procedure 3113 approved by the board, and part of that calls for the board to consider a report on enrollment trends in small schools, and if the board wishes to activate the procedure, to establish a community advisory committee to analyze the data, hold community meetings and report back to the board with its findings. And that's what this report's about. This report includes information in attachments 1 through 6 on the distribution of elementary schools under 400 over the last five years. And you can see from those maps that the pattern has remained relatively constant. The smallest schools are generally in a band across the center of the district, although some of these schools are also, they were built very small and they're currently quite well utilized, as you can see in attachment 7, which looks at enrollment versus capacity and colors the map in that way. We've also included in attachment 8, the kind of data that the committee would consider should the board wish to establish the committee. And it includes information such as schools enrollment over the last decade, capacity, resident and non-resident enrollment, what proportion of residents of a school are choosing to go to their neighborhood school, and there's also information in there on API scores for 2008, 2010 as a measure of looking at achievement information. And as I mentioned in the report, 19 of the 35 smallest schools in our district have API scores of over 800.
Did we get hard copy of this? It's that, oh, okay, because it didn't. Are you sure? It doesn't look the same.
Okay, so I think the question here.
Yeah, I was just going to get, just the end, that, you know, we're going to include information on enrollment trends now that we have the 2010, 2011 data. We're also going to be collecting data, Deputy Superintendent for Business is going to have a team looking at the, a comprehensive per pupil cost measure, which Mr. DeBecque was interested in at the last budget workshop meeting. Those will be measures that a committee could consider as well. And what we did at the end of the report was to look just very tentatively at this information to potentially identify some clusters where it does look like consolidation is possible, although it would then be the purpose of the committee to look at this data and make their decisions. And we'd be going out into community to have meetings. That list of clusters may change. And what we're asking for you to do tonight is, the superintendent recommends that the board start this procedure by establishing a community advisory committee as specified in the procedure. And if you have any questions about the information, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, Dr.
The difficulty I have on this, and I know this is a really difficult topic, and I know I've come about it from different ways in terms of we need this information and that information, is I see two different things. One is the long-term need to the district, looking at the trends, looking at enrollment, looking at population, birth rates, academic trends, transportation, I mean, so many factors. So what we're saying as a district, this is where we need to have schools located. And that depends on if we're making more of a focus on the clusters in terms of having kids go to school, a tendency for kids to go to school closer to where they live, which, you know, doesn't necess, I mean, this is, these are other factors besides what is the size of the school, what is the capacity of the school and so forth. And these are big, long-term issues we have to look at because otherwise we could be in the situation of closing a school and then, and then losing that property, basically, because whether someone else occupies it in the meantime and then we decide we need it, but then we have to go out and find another space because we've already committed it. So there are a lot of complications with not looking at a long-term basis. That's on the one hand. On the other hand, we're looking at this emergency, this budget crisis. So I could see us looking at this 10-year plan for where our schools are now and where we see, expect them to be between now and, say, the year 2020. And then what are we going to do right now this year? And to me, those are two separate decisions because that might be, I'm just going to throw this out, it might be saying, we might have to suspend operations at a couple, some schools for a year or two due to the budget crisis without necessarily the intention of closing that school. Maybe we would in the long term and maybe we wouldn't. I just don't see how we can both have this long-term view and this short-term crisis thing in the same decision-making process. And this is what we came up against in the previous committees, which was, and this is much improved over that, I'm sure, but it was basically, okay, we need to close a certain number of schools, so we'll close these. And it was fitting a certain budget need, but it didn't take this whole big, long-term picture into account. And there's so many trends, as I say. If we are reducing transportation, having more kids going to school closer to home, then it throws off.
That's right.
If there's, if there is a will of the board to move in a certain direction, it throws off all these numbers that we have here. So it's very complicated. And that's why I'm concerned about when, if the board hasn't made certain policy direction decisions, that we're putting a task force, a committee, an advisory council together to come up with some recommendations where they have to be real clear on what are the key values that they're operating on.
Right.
And I don't think we're totally clear on that.
On a small, small level as well, one of the potential decisions to make in terms of budget affects class size ratios, which has an impact on the capacity figures we have in here, which will impact whether or not we could accommodate students at other schools should we close them. So there's lots of moving parts in this, definitely.
Right.
So the question before us is, you know, do we authorize the appointment of this committee, the creation of this committee?
Well, there's already a legal requirement where you have a surplus property committee. That's a state law, okay?
That's a sovereign.
And so if that committee is, if this committee is a committee that's different, then you have to figure out how you're going to interface between the two committees. You know, you can't have two committees doing the same work. You've got to have, if you're going to have a closure committee, which is required by law, and you're going to have another committee recommend closures, you're going to have to get the two groups together or big, do a different design. Because we have a committee already in place that's required by law, you know, excess property committee.
Yeah.
And its purpose is to do exactly what this is about.
Right. This committee may not be making that decision to make the properties excess properties. They might be.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, it's the data that's going to be, both committees are going to be using. It makes sense to me that there'd be either joint membership on the committees so that the one committee knows what the other's doing, or that they're, they meet co-ed on the same time. You know, I don't care, but it just seems to me like a waste of resources to have people serve on two committees or to have two committees looking at the same stuff.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, we have, we have two staff committees that we have started and are in the process of seeing them work, because this whole situation is complicated by our budget deficit in a tremendous degree. We have one committee that's, that's tasked is to look at the impact of reducing magnet transportation on our magnet schools. What schools may have to, in all reality, be closed, be suspended because of that decision. So that's one variable that we're looking at. We have another committee that's looking at, we're trying to look at three, three factors. The enrollment, the capacity of a school, the student achievement and the cost per student. So we crosswalk those three. So we would look at, coming back to you and saying, well, here's a school that has low enrollment, it has low achievement, and it's very expensive. And looking at from that perspective, that might be a rubric to use to help make a decision. So we have, we really, in reality, do have several things going on here at once. The magnet program, high cost, low achievement situation, and then the committee that would be established by this process would be a community advisory committee. That would be much broader in scope than the staff committee, and they would be looking at, probably more the community overall impact on the, on the fabric of the area, on what's going on with the closures. So it is, it is very complicated, but the two we've already got in place.
I think the, I think the point that I'm hearing the staff making is that you can't move forward, you know, with this, with this process that could eventually lead to, you know, schools being closed without us authorizing the creation of this community advisory committee? Is that correct?
That's what the procedure calls for at the moment, but, you know, we've done different things in procedures in the past, but that's what the procedure calls for you to decide.
Yeah.
So, well, I guess one of the things, with the information you have so far, when talking about low enrollment, and there's a certain list of schools that, wherever you draw the line is low enrollment, and then you can also draw a line for low achievement, and then you can draw another line for high cost, seems to me that you're getting down to a very, very narrow list at that point.
Might be.
That, you know, in terms of schools in the district that are meeting, even meeting all three of those criteria, much less many other factors that have to be looked at. I mean, I would guess just a handful of schools would fall into all three of those categories. So then we're kind of back to, well, if we're wanting to look at, you know, consolidating schools and reducing costs, you know, what criteria are we going to use?
Right.
I guess my hesitation in terms of turning it, getting a community committee involved is if we haven't really thoroughly wrestled with some of these issues. Now, I don't know if it's a matter of the, of the staff in a workshop or something, presenting more to the board so that we're saying, okay, philosophically, this is how we want to move forward. And then there are all kinds of ways to implement that, but I don't think you have any unanimity of philosophy of how we should go about this at this point because it's so complicated.
Well, we've done it in the past. We've, we've worked with the committee that was set up to develop criteria like that and done a ranking system. But if it's something that maybe we want to have that established before the committees approve, maybe through communication with the board, that's another way to go, I guess. But we've done that normally within the committee, looked at data, established criteria, done rankings and developed lists that way.
Yes, Mr. Stover and then Mr. DeBecque.
We certainly can, as a staff, provide you the results of the magnet work and the this, looking at the three variables prior to you going out into the community and making that kind of a decision. The budget reduction strategy that we have at this point calls for the reduction of 10 schools, or the suspension or closure of 10 schools. Looking at the magnet impacts, if you maintain the transportation cut, and these variables of the three that we look at to crosswalk, we think we can probably get to 10 as a, as a beginning point to give you lists before you would decide to go to the community.
Could I just ask a question to clarify on that? Which is, you're coming up with a list of 10 schools and then you're cutting, I mean, theoretically, the possibility of cutting transportation for magnets. And one of the things you said is that they may actually, some magnets may not be viable, in which case there, there has, in a horrible way, has been solved part of the closure issue.
That is correct.
Have we?
I wanted to say, Mr. DeBecque.
Well, I'm looking at the map, you know, I guess I think graphically sometimes, but attachment 7, elementary school capacity, 209 and 10, elementary school capacity is a map, and it's color-coded and it shows that some schools, in fact, a lot of schools in southeast San Diego are at the 71% capacity. That's an interesting piece of information, because for years I've been saying that the reason why we have busing is that we don't have the capacity for the kids in the schools where they're leaving. But apparently, from this data, that's not actually accurate. Well, what I'm getting at is this, if we're talking about all this stuff and we're trying to figure out ways to save money, okay, I don't personally believe that, I'm not against busing. Personally, I believe that mixing our population of kids is the best thing we could do for the future of America. But I can't argue about the economies unless I have data. What I want to know is, if we didn't bus.
Right.
What would be the result of the capacity of schools? And yes, it would be, I already know what it means, but I'm going to at least have to face the honest question. If that means that there's going to be reduced enrollment in the north part of the city and more closed schools in the north part of the city, then I'm going to at least have that discussion. It's not that I support it, because I believe there's a lot more benefits to our community having these kids share their classrooms. But if that, if that argument is, you know, if you look at the chart, you'll also find a whole lot of them north of A that are low capacity as well. So then we really need to have an analysis of the consequences of busing.
Right.
And it might be the analysis of busing for choice, another set of analysis for the busing for magnet schools.
Right.
And, you know, frankly, I've never, I was never in favor of charging money for choice or magnet. or magnet for transportation for people. Because you shouldn't, you know, if you offer a program, it was designed to be a magnet to bring people to that place. But if it, if it's not working, then we ought to just stop thinking about it and quit using magnet money to move people around. But anyway, I don't want to get into having to defend a false premise. I want the real facts in front of us so we can look at them.
Yeah, we can certainly-
If Sheila's right, that the kids should return to the neighborhood, so be it. If it's an economy, certainly I can't argue with that economy. And, you know, we'll have to take our blows on other fronts. But to have the truth in front of us is more important than a bunch of studies by people of the existing situation, which can't be fixed unless you actually look at what you're doing. And so, you know, let's talk about it, or let's get to resport. How many kids are we busing from where to where? And what's the result if we suspended it?
The table, I think, in Attachment 8 does show the total number of residents in a boundary versus those who actually choose to go to school. We don't show information on who, why they're making those choices to leave, and we can certainly disaggregate it that way.
You know, you need what-ifs. You just need what-ifs when you're in our circumstance. You can't sit here, and I had, go under the premise of old information that I had, which I think was right, was that at one time, we had, because now we've overbuilt, although I'm not only going to say overbuilt, well, we built more schools in southeast. The same premise that I operated on in the past may not be true. And I need to know that so that at least I can correct my point of view, or at least understand, you know, what decisions are facing us. And I don't think, you know, my past knowledge is working as I look at this chart. But it also means a lot more kids need to go to Wegaforth, Coverley, Juarez, Toller, and University City area, because they're low enrollment too.
And Catherine and Phil and Sheila.
I don't think Wegaforth's all that low, actually, if you look at the current one.
The chart says.
But the, well, I'm actually, I guess I'm not looking at enrollment, I'm looking at the-
It shows that-
Capacity. I'm looking at capacity, which is about-
71%.
Yeah, but it's not, you know, less than 60%. You know, it's not less than 70%. So my point on this is, I think what's interesting is if you look at these green areas, which is where we're really in crisis, and it looks as though people are fleeing, they're on the borders with other school districts. I mean, it's really striking, you know, that a lot of them are bordering other school districts. And I am thinking that they're leaving and going to other school districts, and other school districts are maybe doing a much better job of recruiting our schools, recruiting our kids into their schools for enrollment. Do we have any sense of residential, where students are, resident students are going out of district?
We do. I think, working with the Enrollment Options Office, I've heard from them, I don't have a table for you, but they have said that, for example, where you see Clay Rolando Park and Carver, that there is some transferring going over to the district next door, also down around National City as well, I've heard that that's a case. We can tabulate that for you.
Yeah, and what kind of agreements do we have with those school districts? My understanding is that their students are frequently not allowed to come into our district, that a school district can bar that and say, no, you can't, you can't have transfer, and then, you know, you can't trans, but you can come into our district, but we're not letting any of ours go into yours. They have to have permission to do that, and we freely give away that, that ability, correct? You know?
Do they ever come to our district?
Okay, I've understood that they don't. I know that Grossmont has an agreement. Mr. Koba, can you tell us?
I will have to ask the enrollment office.
Okay, because I can remember years past, Grossmont did not, they didn't come into our district. So, but I'm wondering what we could do to help those schools and pull enrollment back in. I'm also wondering with regard to magnet schools, these are really smart parents, and magnet school parents are parents that make choices, deliberate choices. They've thought about their children's education, and they're making sacrifices in order to enroll their children in that school in particular. I wouldn't be surprised if we, if you found those magnet schools going charter on us, you know, that they just gather up the signatures and, you know, to heck with this, and we're just going to go charter on you in order to preserve those schools. It would certainly save us money, but it also means an unprecedented drop in enrollment when they do that. So you might want to drop that in the bucket and think about it. It's, that's a definite possibility. Because these are very, I think, on whole, I think magnet school parents are very engaged and very smart and can figure this out, so.
I think, Phil, go ahead.
I was just going to point out that what Mr. DeBecque said is part of the purpose of the committee that's led by Carolyn Guz, to look at the impact on the sending school, what I would call the sending schools, where the students are coming from, their enrollment, their, their capacity. Because, because if we do determine that there are magnet schools that may not be able to be sustainable without the transportation, then the schools that are now at 70% or 69% will be at 92% or even more, once that happens. So it's imperative that we look at it both ways. Where we're sending to, where we're sending from, and those who are in these schools, where they will have to go back to. So we will be providing you that information. And our target's to do that in your, one of your first budget workshops in November.
A couple of things. I think now that I remember one of your committees is looking at the impact of magnet and V, but the person that's chairing the committee is a magnet person. So I'm pretty sure it's going to come back very favorable for the magnet schools. I mean, that, you know, I would like to say people are always objective, but I'm not always sure when it comes to, you know, having to come to their programs, they're going to be objective. And I think maybe it would have been a better idea to have put someone that was not involved with either of those programs over it, to ensure that you have an objective outcome. But my first comment, going back to what Mr. DeBecque said, is that over a period of time, things change. And things have changed in the district. The board has changed, the board's philosophy has changed. In addition to that, we're in the middle of an economic crisis. So that means we have to look at things a little bit differently. Whereas, the other thing is that we, nobody wants to close schools. And I've always said, you want to know how a community looks, look at its schools. If the schools is closed, there's usually no future for that community. So it's very difficult to want to close, close schools. What we have to do, and I don't remember your numbers right now, is look at what are the numbers of students residing in a unified school district? And how do we get those students back into our schools wherever they are? That has to be the focus. So we're not pitting each other, we're against, north against south, east against west, or those on the border against other, other districts. But the fact is that, and Bernie knows, we've taught a couple of times, how do we engage our principals to become recruiters for their schools? That is not something a traditional public school principal has ever had to deal with. They're used to opening the doors of their schools and voila, there's students, okay? That is not the reality for charters and private schools. They've always known. They've got to get out there, they've got to hustle, they've got to recruit, we've got to recruit students. So we have to find a way to engage our, our leadership and our, you know, whether it's principals or ed center people or whomever, to help us recruit students back into our schools. While we're looking at this economic crisis. The things that we have put in place already with busing, I think that's going to be coming, coming back, back to with some of the early data. We know that some people aren't paying, and they should be paying, and all this has to be worked out. But the bottom line is that we have to, again, encourage people to think about attacking these problems a little bit differently, okay? That means that we say there's no busing and kids staying at home school, that's one. But then how many kids are in other communities that are right there that are going over the hill to Powerway, or over the hill to a private school? We have to learn how to recruit. We have wonderful programs, wonderful programs. And, and what is happening is, we're letting other people tell our story in a negative way, let's have us tell our story in a positive way. That's where we are right now.
So, it seems like, in terms of a decision that we need to make tonight, I'm hearing two options. One is, Dr. Evans, I think, is suggesting that before we would appoint a community advisory committee, maybe we pull together a board workshop or something where we actually work through some criteria that we can give guidance, you know, to the committee. The other option would be that we actually create the committee and have some discussion whether the, you know, the committee sort of takes a first shot and says, here's the criteria that we want to develop, or the board does. But yeah, Superintendent, what's your?
Let me suggest to the board that, let's, the staff continue to do more work with some of the what-if drills. I think tonight's report was meant to at least put an opening round of information in front of you. Every one of you has had excellent things to say about, you know, graphs like that that start to show you a different picture. I mean, I asked them to add the maps because they do send you in a different way. Where are the capacities? Why are the capacities there? What if we do things like alter magnets? What does that ripple effect back into schools? So I think it would be better if we continue to let the staff do some analysis and then sit down and say, well, now, what do you think of this board?
Right.
What direct, what does the information now show you? Where would you like us to go? Or have us help, we tell you, where we think you may want to go for consideration?
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Just one point, I think, I mean, I agree with doing that, having the staff do that. But one, I think gross measure that would be useful, we've got all the information about the schools and where the kids are at, and we've all seen this great stuff about market share. And first of all, I want to say that, that you have really presented, in the past and now, really, really valuable data to this, to this board. I mean, because we're, we're not operating in the dark, and just as Mr. DeBecque said, when you see, I saw the same thing a while back, when I looked and I saw that there was in certain areas where I thought we, we have to have buses because there aren't schools there, and you find out that they're under capacity and so forth. But one really simple measure would be simply, if all of the public school kids who are currently attending public school, if you took their address and had them attending their neighborhood school, what would that map look like? I know that there are other variables, like who, who would leave because of that to go to a private school or a charter school, or also who might come back because the neighborhood school is revitalized. There are all kinds of things. But if you just take that, and I'm not saying that we would do away with all programs 100%, there are particular reasons someone would go to a different school, but we can have the current reality, and then that reality, and then I think what the board would do is say, which, where do we want to kind of meet up? What do we want to preserve, and what do we want to fix?
All right, I think we need to move on from this.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If I could say, President, I appreciate the words because I think Roy really has drilled down in a number of ways over the last year or two of this stuff.
Yeah. Okay, item H3, so our monthly HR and finance update.
Yes, sir. And we'd like to have our new chief financial officer.
All right.
Ron Little. Thank you, Superintendent Koba. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we're going to present our second month-end closed financial report. And obviously, since it's for the month of August, since school is not in session, as you can imagine, it is fairly uneventful. I believe there's a PowerPoint that goes along with this, if we could pull it up. So I'll succinctly cover a few key areas. We'll review the August financial results, the cash balances, revenues and expenditures. We'll review you the budget watch list. We'll talk about next steps. And then additionally, if it pleases the board, I'll just make some comments about the state budget and where we think we are with that.
You know, I'm, I'm for ceremony, and I don't think you've been properly introduced by our superintendent.
Well, trustees, this is-
Rewind.
This is Mr. Ron Little. Ron has recently joined us, a week ago Monday, coming from the South San Francisco School District.
Title, his title is?
And his title is Chief Financial Officer. Now, his previous title, I believe, was Deputy for Business?
Associate Superintendent for Business.
Associate Superintendent for Business. And he comes to us with multiple district experiences in the Bay Area, as well as time spent in city public sector agencies as well. So he has well over a decade plus of public sector experience. He's originally from Southern California, has a master's degree in finance, and also is one of the few CBO qualified personnel coming through a specific program. So he really comes with great credentials and is the result of a very specific wide search conducted by School Services of California. So we've got a real winner here.
And the item is H3.
Item is H3.
The item is H3, yes, but it, it just, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And the board is aware of who you are, but, you know, there are cameras, and we actually have a lot of people to watch us, so.
Appreciate that, thank you. Thank you for the introduction, and thank you for the opportunity to serve the students of the school district. So as you know, the monthly, the monthly close is a new performance mechanism that we've implemented recently, and it's really a variance report that looks at where are we with respect to budget and actuals in a given month. I'm going to squint here because I don't have my glasses on. So here we go. So at the, at the beginning of August, we were about $6.6 million negative in terms of cash, and I believe that we reviewed that the last meeting. Our total revenues that we received were about $17.6 million less than projected, primarily due to timing reasons. The deferrals from the state continued, and we did receive some Title I money and some, some block grant money that were received the month prior that were budgeted in August. Our disbursements were a little less than anticipated, and we had some reimbursements from some other funds for payroll expenditures primarily, that are typically budgeted in September, but the program managers, for various reasons, decided to transfer those into August, which obviously helped our bottom line. And we ended the month with a favorable balance of $7.4 million. From the general fund revenue side for August, we had some good news, as you're aware. The state approved the SDA allocation from AB 184. So we received that $18 million back, which was ours in the first place, and which we had budgeted, and the county said that we couldn't budget. So we are receiving it from, we're receiving the allocation again, and we're just waiting for a disbursement schedule from the, from the state. Also in August, of course, we received notice about the federal jobs bill. So again, that's one-time money worth about $21.4 million to the district. We just received our first 90% allocation at the end of September, so it's in, it's in the ending balance right now. It's unrestricted general fund money, obviously, to sustain, maintain, retain, and encourage maintaining our, our jobs and the programs that we offer our students directly. We'll receive the other 10% of those funds after P2s. We'll square up after our attendance at P2, which is in May, April, May, as we referenced earlier.
Ron, do you want to make a point of how much the jobs money we actually got versus how much we're going to get at P2?
Yes, so we, we got about $19.2 million with the 90% allocation, and we'll get the balance next year, actually. So they'll square up at P2, it'll take them some time, and we'll get the, the actual cash in 2011, 2012.
And the balance would be what, Ron?
About 1.4 million.
Okay.
As you know, at the time, the state budget was not approved, but it was signed on Friday, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. We also got a, an ARA educational grant with respect to technology. I believe that we applied for a $3 million grant. We received a $1 million grant, and my understanding is that's going to go primarily towards educational software and professional development around using that software in the classroom. So it's, it's a nice addition to our instructional program. In terms of the expenses, I'll just share that at the end of August, we had a $173 million balance, ending fund balance. We had $60 million on the unrestricted side, $113 million on the restricted side, which includes the required reserves. So we had a required reserves on the unrestricted side of $10 million, and a set aside of restricted money that we have yet to expand and designate on the restricted side of $27.5 million. So that leaves about $146 million unencumbered and unexpended to cover our operational costs, such as utilities, our hourly time, and our supplies. As you know, and we referenced here this evening, you've been discussing the excess staff. At, in August, we were at about 297 FTE that were in holding. Since then, of course, HR has been working very diligently to place those staff, and I'm happy to report that at the end of September, that number was down to closer to about 125, 130 FTE. And as we make these final enrollment adjustments at the site levels and add teachers due to growth, we're, we're hopeful that, you know, most of those additions obviously can come from this excess pool. So that's what HR and the team is working on. In terms of the watch list- In terms of the watch list, again, since August was kind of a boring month from the fiscal side, there's not much to watch. We're working to finalize, as you know, an external audit with respect to one of our granters for the EEC grant, and we just had a meeting today, and we expect that we will come to closure on that process within the next 30 days. So we'll bring that back to you in some form or another at a future meeting in the very near future. Excess positions, we talked about. And then we're looking at about a half million dollar swing with respect to invoices and other payables that came in after the books closed and too late to book for last year that we'll have to book for this year. On the revenue side, of course, we talked about the federal jobs bill being one-time money, and we also have some additional SFSF money coming, which is the last portion, the last allocation of the federal stimulus funds. Just looking quickly across all funds, again, this is looking at our current budget, 10/11 versus...
Ron, just real quick, I'm sorry, could you go back to that?
Sure, absolutely.
The additional stabilization money, is that money that we have budgeted for this year?
I believe we have budgeted it.
It's not...
Let me double check with staff.
Yes.
Nope, I'm wrong. Thank you. It's $4 million in addition.
Okay, thanks.
Try and find another additional $4 million.
I'm sure that wasn't 40?
Lying around.
We need a few more zeros behind that. Yeah, the feds found themselves with more money in that program and allocated it out, it sounds like. In terms of all funds, this is just looking at what have we encumbered and expended to date, in red, obviously, and what was budgeted to date. So these would be about the levels that we expect two months into the fiscal year across the funds.
Let's, on this extra $4 million, where, how is the Board going to make any decisions about how it gets expended or what we're going to do with it?
Well, considering we're looking at $141 million deficit, we could lower it to 137.
True, but, you know, I mean, there are other programs that we wanted to, $4 million's $4 million, I'm sorry.
What we're hoping to do is...
Ocelot, yeah, that's exactly, actually, what I was thinking, we could bring ocelot back.
With respect...
$1 million, yeah, yeah. Okay, sorry, Ron.
Okay, so we looked at all funds, moving on here. So now we're looking at the general fund, just the remaining balances. So what's not encumbered and what's not expended from the restricted side, the unrestricted side, and the total budget. This is just to reflect our general fund by major account code. So the left side is obviously the adopted budget, and you can see that nearly 90% of our budget there was for salaries and benefits. And the right side is the year-to-date graphic, and you'll see that most of, obviously, most of the salaries have been encumbered. So we're now down to about 50% of the unexpended side, and those expenses that have not been encumbered, I'm sorry, that have not been encumbered, going to salary. Another 25% going for books and supplies. And then, of course, we have our reserve levels there, the restricted and the unrestricted This is a breakdown of the unrestricted. Again, the left side is the budget, looking at about a little over half of the unrestricted budget going to salaries at adopted budget, and looking at where we are now in terms of the end of August. It's still about, it's about half, 25% now we've encumbered and expended. We also have our $7 million, I'm sorry, we have our $10 million reserve, $7 million of which is the required reserve, the .67, and $3 million of some prepaid, some stores, some revolving cash. The restricted side is a similar comparison between what we budgeted and where we are, And finally, just a little bit of detail with respect to our materials and supplies budget. So you'll see that the supplies represent about 44% of our total materials budget, and our textbooks there represent about 10% of our total materials budget. This is just a spending comparison. These are actuals now, so what did we spend last year at this time versus what are we actually expending this year? So you can see, we're right on track in a comparative analysis. The only thing I might mention is the restricted side has spent a little bit, at a little quicker rate, because we actually paid for our surpayment out of restricted, a little ahead of schedule this time of the year.
Ron, I just want to thank the entire staff. We've been asking for this for two years.
Oh, good.
This is terrific. We thank you guys for putting this together.
I was going to say, you've just, you've been asking for it for two years. We've been asking for a lot longer.
In terms of next steps, of course, we'll have the budget workshop coming up here on November 4th. Our first interim period ends October 31st, so staff will be busy working at those, on those numbers in the month of November. We'll bring the first interim report back to you, as you know, in December, and of course, they're due to the county by December 15th. And we're doing all that in conjunction with hopefully offering the information that the Board needs in terms of making some decisions around the budget. In terms of the state budget, Dr. Evans earlier sort of referred to the information that was being disseminated this evening as good news, bad news. And I would say that the state budget generally is also good news, bad news. And I just want to share some of that. You know, in terms of funding, Prop 98 funding, which is, you know, the constitutional guarantee that K-14 educations will get a base amount of funding every year, and it's been suspended for a few years now, it's suspended again. The good news is that we'll get 1.3, district statewide, schools will get $1.3 billion more than the governor suggested at his May revise. The bad news is that we're still $4.3 billion below the floor. So we're actually in the basement. So we're considerably below the constitutional guarantee. On the plus side, the state is going to restore our negative COLA, which they funded, and that'll generate about $3 million to the district. The downside, the negative, is that we won't see that money until 2011, 2012. So it's been deferred. It won't help us with cash this year, and we hope to receive it in 2012, 2011, 2012. Similarly, the state budget restores the 3.85% takeback this year, which is ongoing, and that will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $27 million to the district. Again, that's being deferred, so we will not receive that payment, and we will not recognize that revenue, most likely, until 2011, 2012. So overall, the state has increased our ongoing funding by $1.7 billion district or statewide for this year. However, they're funding none of it in this current year. So that's a concern that we have, obviously. I would also say that the total K-12 funding is about $54 billion in the state budget, which is about $2.8 billion less than the May revise. The challenge that we have on the flip side is that the state budget, as you know, is predicated on some very aggressive assumptions. And in terms of being transparent, you know, those are assumptions around revenue, our federal revenues. The state's predicting about $5 billion in federal revenues. The LAO projects somewhere close to the neighbor of $3 billion in revenues coming in. Another example, on the expense side, the state is predicting $7.5 billion of reductions just in their own operations. And to date, you know, a quarter way into the fiscal year, the LAO reports that none of those savings have materialized. So again, that shows you the optimism with which I think this state budget was passed and reflects our concern about, you know, how much of the increase that has been given to education will actually be passed through and we'll actually be able to see.
Ron, do you have any sense of, in terms of our December 15th report, at what point will we have some guidance, would you sense, from the county in terms of, you know, we know that this deferred money, we know it's being deferred, but can we actually count it as revenue for...
We are going to meet with the county next week to have that conversation.
Yeah.
So we will report back to the Board once we got confirmation.
Okay.
In the memo that I sent the Board, I argued that it's been going on since 2004, 2000, well, since 2003, 2004, and to turn the ship now just is not logical. But, so we'll have a good conversation with the county. From my understanding, they're very supportive and very collaborative and willing to work with us. So we're optimistic that that will be the case and we'll be able to book the revenue, but we don't know for a fact yet.
First of all, in terms of when we dipped into our reserves at one point because we didn't have the SDA money.
Correct.
So we went from 2% to .67. So that has been replenished, or the reserve?
We're still at .67% in the reserve. So if you remember that one slide, if we went back a couple of slides, there was $10 million on the unrestricted side, and seven of that was the .67%, and the other three was kind of prepaid expenditures and inventory.
But if we're getting $18 million from the state, are we not going to replenish the reserve fund back up to...
That's our goal, absolutely. So that'll be a first interim adjustment. So we'll look at, we'll look at all the various revenue streams and make assumptions around what we're going to be receiving and not receiving, and our goal is to replenish the reserve.
Well, that wasn't just a goal, it was the direction of the Board, that if we receive that money, it is to be returned to the reserves in order to protect our credit rating.
It was a temporary county measure because we had to report to the county by that week, and we didn't have the answer on SDA until after that. So we said, we're basically moving it out until we get that approval.
Thank you for that clarification.
And you can watch the videotape.
Yes. It was a short video.
On another night, maybe, yeah.
And again, I really appreciate the last chart here. And another thing that would be helpful as we're going along would be in certain areas to show how we are performing. I mean, for example, payroll, are we, you know, above or below where we're supposed to, transportation. I mean, we make all these decisions about these budgets, and yet the history in years past was basically a budget would be passed, then that was kind of ignored and money was spent, and we wanted to be able to kind of follow this on a month-to-month basis to see if it's being proportionately spent as we're going along. And related to that, and this is related to what Mr. DeBeck was saying, to be able to monitor when we, last year, when we chose to make certain savings, that those savings are actually occurring.
Absolutely, and we're doing that analysis now, actually.
And also to be able to give credit to departments that are saving even more than we wanted.
Great. Anything else? Thank you, Ron, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
Great job. Good, okay.
It's a tough job, but somebody's got to do it.
Somebody's got to do it. Okay, so I think we're moving on to our consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
And does any Board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? I'm not going to even look over here. I'll take that. I'll take that. No? All right, let's vote before Sheila comes for a sentence. Excellent, and with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.
She was out of town, let's go.